The time is now 6:00 PM and I'll call to order our joint city council and McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee work session. And I will, all right, I'll call on special project manager Jody Christensen and Jeff Gooden to introduce our topic tonight.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We're going to be giving you an update on where we are in Phase D of the Third Street Improvement Project. Oh, sorry. Right up against it. Well, I should, oh, perfect. My first number will be, I would never do that to you. Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you to talk about the Third Street Improvement Project. We're in Phase D. We wanted to give you an update on the work that we've done to date. We have our consultants here with us and we've provided you some background information and we wanted to make sure that this, that you had the opportunity to weigh in and take a look at where we are and help us understand if there's anything that we need to be considering as we're moving forward. So I'll have, I'll introduce Jeff here.
Yeah, so Jeff Gooden, project manager, and Matt and Jason from our consultant team are going to have a presentation here for you guys, so we'll kick it over to them.
Thank you. Matthew Arnold with Sarah Design on the consultant team, and I'm just pulling up a slideshow for you. While I'm doing that, I would also like you to know that on our call, we also have Stephen Getz from our, from our team. Stephen is our consulting arborist and you'll hear, a lot of his input has been really key to the discussion we'll be having tonight. So you'll bear with me while I just get this slideshow up and running. We'll get going.
Remember, as soon as the presentation begins, any questions that you have to ask the other side?
We would love to answer any questions anytime you have them. This has been a work in progress for, as you know, several years and we would not want you to hold, hold back, so please do, feel free to, feel free to interrupt.
Outside of questions, how long do you anticipate this presentation going? I just want to make sure that we don't get too deep in the weeds on questions.
Fully appreciate it. The presentation itself should only take about 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay.
But really, we want you to be able to understand all the work that's gone in and to really sort of push and pull on what we're going to show you.
Sounds good. If anybody has a question, feel free to raise your hand.
Thanks. Without sort of further ado, we'll give you a quick update on the, on the project, on our schedule, sort of where we are. We'll tell you about what's going on with the business resilience work. The main core of what we'll be talking about are the street trees. It's been a big part of the conversation. We'll also have a budget update from, from Heather towards the end. Just to review for everyone's sort of good of the order, we've been working on the preliminary engineering phase of Third Street, right after several years of work. That is Third Street all the way from Adams to Johnson. Here's just, I know this is probably a little bit small for folks to read, but just know that there are four main tracks that we've been working on, the actual design work, design and engineering, that's that very top piece. We've had a technical team reviewing all of our work to date. We've been engaged with the community largely through a project advisory committee made up of stakeholders, but we've also had one community forum. And we've had a business resilience track and that's the one on the bottom. So we're kind of smack in the, in the middle here in February. This is a phase of work that is slated to end currently in August. As I mentioned, that track at the very bottom, the business resilience work, we've started to engage with business, business owners and operators, not just on Third Street, but throughout downtown. Our business resilience consultant has done a, what she calls a street assessment, looking at the different businesses and their operations throughout downtown. She's done in-business visits and interviews with folks to understand what some of their challenges and concepts are. She's had small group interviews that were held back in, back in January, actually hosted by Doris Towery from the McMinnville Downtown Association. We should let you know that city staff was actually invited to not attend those meetings just so that the business owners really felt like they could share things in an open and honest fashion. That consultant will be presenting her findings to the downtown businesses just coming up here in a couple of weeks on March 12th. As we do with every presentation that we make on this project, we won't spend any time reviewing these, but we want you to know that this is upfront, which is the vision for Northeast Third Street that really talks about a welcoming and opening, an open streetscape experience that is inviting for downtown, that is quirky, interesting, and reflects that historic character. We always put this upfront along with our goals and objectives. One thing I do want to highlight, and this will be related directly to our conversation this evening, is at our last project advisory committee meeting, we added a new goal. We've, we've had these goals and objectives since 2018, 2019, when we worked on the original vision for Third Street, but we added a new one just last month, which is, where feasible to preserve Third Street's existing street trees. And you'll see where that, I'm sure you can understand why it's so important to community members and you'll see how we've, we're tackling that later on in this presentation. There are also design principles. These again have not, have not changed over the years, but we again always put them upfront to remind ourselves what it is that we're all about here. To the street trees. The, the streets, the trees, I'm sorry, that exist on Third Street, many of them, not all of them, but many of the trees are older. They've been there since the, the original streetscape went in. They've grown large and beautiful. They even, in some cases, at full bloom, full leaf out, touch in the middle of the, middle of the street, creating kind of a tunnel effect. Those street trees are iconic for many community members. That said, there are some challenges with some of them. Some of them are starting to experience health issues. There are concerns about how viable they will be during a major construction project and we should be clear, the, what is being proposed is a major construction project for Third Street, one that involves not only a streetscape design, but also the replacement of critical infrastructure. So the question becomes, if you've got a goal to preserve the existing street trees, where feasible? How will you evaluate those trees? How will you figure out which existing trees can remain as part of this process? So these, don't worry about reading all of these, they're actually sort of broken out on these subsequent slides. The first sort of criteria, the most obvious one, is their, their health, right? How well are the trees doing? There was a 2019 survey, actually completed by Steve Getz, who's on the, the call with us tonight, right? Where there were trees that were rated on a, on a scale from poor, very poor, I'm sorry, very poor, poor, fair, good, and excellent. The trees that were rated poor and very poor, those are the ones that we are recommending for removal. They're the ones that are not doing, doing well today. They're the ones that are least likely to do well in the future. Those are trees that have visible wounds, they've got poor growth, asymmetric growth, sunscald, which has been an issue with some of the heat that we've had in recent years, some amount of dead, dead stems, all of which you can see, even though this photo looks beautiful, you can actually see some of those signs of a sunscald, dead wood, just on this, this beautiful shot here. So in, in our thinking, compromised health would be the number one criteria that you would, you would look at. This is, the ratings that we have to date were done on a 2019 survey. You should know that as part of our project, there will be a refreshed survey of all the trees on Third Street that will complete, be completed later this spring. We're also looking at, oh, please.
Was that 19 study done at the same time of year or will this be?
Approximately the same time of year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. There's, we need the leaves to come out, sort of a certain degree, you have to, you know, see the trees when they're not dormant, but also not too late into the summer, so it'll be done in the spring. We're figuring out the exact timing of it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Also related to trees health is their, degree to which they have lifted roots, right? Many of the trees that were planted, were planted because they're so beautiful in the fall, they have great fall color, but those, that very characteristic is often tied to shallow roots and what we're seeing up and down Third Street, you all have no doubt experienced it yourselves, is a certain degree of lifting of those sidewalks. Because we need to, in the future, when we rebuild these sidewalks, we need to bring those sidewalks back down to grade so that there is ADA access, full, full universal access up and down the street and to the adjacent businesses. We can't raise the sidewalks. To do that means, to preserve those trees in place would mean shaving down the roots of these existing trees where their roots are lifted as badly as the ones that you see in this, in these photographs. In so doing, you would, you would both compromise the health of the trees, but also create a hazard of those trees falling over, especially during construction. In other words, once the roots are greatly diminished, they become less stable as part of, during construction when there's no sidewalks holding them down. For those reasons, lifted roots becomes another criteria. If the roots are significantly lifted, the trees are being recommended for, for removal. There are also some trees that may have conflicts with critical infrastructure, right? Where they're remembering that there are other aspects to the streetscape besides the trees, it's a major infrastructure project. So if there are conflicts with, say, signals or streetlights, we know that some of the trees are actually getting a little bit too involved with some of the below-grade infrastructure. If a tree is going to be in conflict with a pedestrian ramp, that ramp that takes you down from the sidewalk onto the street level, that is required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, where those conflicts exist, we would also recommend removing those trees. So that became a criteria as well. And then lastly, the fourth major criteria is conflict with agency standards. This is a, a long-term build. This is a 50-year-plus investment that the city of McMinnville is, is considering for this streetscape. We're replacing a lot of pipes. If there are, those instances where, for example, a tree in its current location would be in conflict with a proposed pipe in the ground, that would create a sort of a conflict over, over time. In other words, if a standard says, well, you've got to be five feet from, you know, from a water main, that's not a place that we would maintain sort of an existing tree. There are also standards around clear vision area, which is that triangle that exists as if you're a driver, how you sort of look across a corner at an intersection. If a tree is blocking your view, you won't be able to see oncoming or across traffic as well as pedestrians. In other words, those agency standards that are there to protect infrastructure and promote safety are those that we have to be very, very careful of, especially given the full-time horizon of this project, that 50-year time horizon. Now, we, there could be exceptions that can be gained and we'll talk about that in a moment, but that became another criteria that was put into the mix. When those four things are put together, you get this decision tree about, about how to think about looking at existing trees. And this is the decision tree that the consultant team, city staff, and our project advisory committee, and our technical advisory committee have been looking at for the last couple of months. And this is the one that was actually adopted by the project advisory committee just, just earlier this month on the first of February. So to look at the, the matrix here, you start to see compromised health being that number one criteria, right? If there is compromised health, if a tree is rated poor, very poor, or even worse, if it's rapidly declining, then you would remove that tree. If not, you move down the, down this decision matrix. You would then move to this lifted roots question. If the roots are lifted, you know, the tree would be removed. If they're not, is there a conflict with existing infrastructure or with critical infrastructure? In this case, there becomes a question. There's a conflict with, with critical infrastructure, is there a way for us to modify the design or such that we can accommodate both the trees and the infrastructure? If, and if we, if unfortunately we can't, the tree would be removed. If you can though, then you have to look at the agency standards, right? These, the remaining trees, after you've gone through this process, are there some that would conflict with agency standards? Can we get a modification to those standards? Could we work with McMinnville Water and Light, for example, and get their approval? Or can we work with the fire district? If, if not, then they would be removed. If we can get that kind of modification, then those trees would be intended for preservation. That's the, the general logic that we're working with to this point. That gets you to this green box towards the very bottom of this, this matrix, where then the, the design process moves in kind of a loop where we go through the various rounds of design, 15% design, 30% design, eventually 60 and 90%. And with, with each round, not only weighing the, the previous sort of criteria, but also thinking about, are we still achieving the overall design effect that we're, that we're hoping for? In other words, are they, these trees consistent with the goals and objectives? Those design principles are at the very top of this, of this deck? Are they working for sort of existing businesses and their plans? Are they working for the, the overall sort of downtown association and the vision for downtown? In other words, there's a, a place for the project and technical advisory committees to really sort of weigh in and help us refine that design and really consider, at this point, individual trees and their placement. We should also let you know that construction is a whole separate sort of piece of work. There is a very real chance that during construction, during, particularly during demolition, when we start to really understand what's going on underneath all these sidewalks, underneath the roadway, that we may find out something about these existing trees, something a little bit more about their health, or we may find that their, their root systems have been too damaged such that they, they cannot be preserved in place. At that point, there may be a need to remove additional, additional trees and the city is going to be working over the, from now until we get to construction, which is still a few years out, to develop a process by which those can really be evaluated so that it's not just the contractor that's making those calls in real time, but that there's a, a process and that the public is informed about that process. In other words, recognizing how important these trees are to the community and making sure that there's transparency about any additional trees that might be removed as a result of construction. We should let you know that as of right now, we have just started to evaluate the trees. Based on the 2019 survey, again, that's going to be updated this year, approximately 10% of the existing street trees on Third Street would be removed just because of their compromised health, because they're either in poor, very poor, or, or declining health. We'll be updating that number over the course of this spring. The design team is now looking at, you know, up and down the street where the lifted roots, we're laying out the curb lines, really trying to understand where those conflicts might exist and we're weighing them against agency standards. So that is a process that's going on right now and we'll have an update for you all and the community in the coming months as we work through those, that analysis and the initial designs. We thought I should let you know that we'll be back here with you all. Right now, we're looking at July 23rd with what we're calling 30% design, where we'll have, you know, pretty good sense of where the design is. We'll also have a, a cost estimate, which I'm sure folks will be quite interested in, and we'll have this update on the trees at that point that'll give you a better sense of exactly how many trees we're talking about and which categories they fall into. In other words, providing folks with the rationale for why trees may be marked for removal. With that, you can certainly take questions, but I also know that, that Heather Richards would like to provide an update on the budget, so. Great, thanks. Are there, are there questions or concerns based on what we've just gone over?
Any questions, Councilor Chauvin?
My question really doesn't have to do with trees. Can I go outside the scope? I, I think every time we've had a discussion along the lines of what's going on in the Third Street project, I've voiced this concern and so I just want to keep my pattern up of voicing this concern. I'm concerned about the parking changes that are taking place. We're, we're dropping, as far as I calculate it, one parking space per block each side of the street. When I add that up, that's 20 parking spaces for the 10-block coverage of this plan. I know during off-hours, that's really not a huge problem. You can drive around the block a couple of times and get a parking spot eventually. But during peak hours, I, I go down regularly and eat at one of my favorite restaurants, which I won't advertise, but, and I find that during peak hours, it is very difficult to get parking downtown already. So I'm concerned when we take 20 parking spots out of the downtown core, what that's going to mean during peak hours, particularly for our businesses, and just wanting to make sure that this is really well thought out of what that consequence is going to look like. Because I don't want to put ourselves in a, in a position where after the fact, it's much easier to address this ahead of time, it's much harder to fix this after the fact. So I just want to bring that up and make sure that's being addressed well.
Yeah, Jason White with BKF Engineers. I'm the civil engineer and project manager of the consultant team. So we are, our subconsultant Kittleson is preparing a parking study associated with this project and that will look at the, the reduction installs and how that is, impacts downtown. So that is a, a scope item that we are, should be wrapping up in the next month or two. So there's that part of the scope of the project.
Thank you very much. And again, my biggest concern, and I know we shouldn't necessarily target around peak hours, but that's when the restaurants are going to be doing their business, right? Is peak hours, dinner and lunch. So my biggest concern is not off-hours, so make, if you would, please make sure in that study that we're looking at peak hours and how that's going to impact.
And I just wanted to follow up with some additional information. If you remember when we were doing the conceptual design, this was brought up as a concern as well by the project advisory committee and also council leadership as we were coming to you with the different updates. At that time, we hired, I think it was Kittleson we hired then as well, we hired Kittleson to look at the reduction in parking, so what it amounted to, and I think you're right, I think it was one, one stall per side of the block, and then look at efficiencies on the side streets and Second and Fourth Street to see if we could make up that parking in terms of more efficient parking management on those streets. If you remember looking, when you're walking downtown, I call it the no man's land, but there's, there's these, there's these like six-foot wide areas between parking stalls every once in a while, and I think it's, I think it's where the trees are, but where parking is not signed on the street in terms of a stall, but it adds up that real estate. And so what we did was we analyzed removing that real estate from the no parking zone and putting it into parking inventory. And at that point, I think the study showed it was cost neutral in terms of the parking stalls. Now that was, that was a, you know, sort of quick and dirty study. The scope they're doing now in the, this phase of the project will go into much more depth in that regard.
Jeff, do we have a meter person, meter maid type person doing parking downtown right now?
We do have a parking enforcement officer, yes.
That I probably don't want to put this on the record, but I will do it anyways. I can tell you, most of those get filled up during peak hours. Even though they're not marked, people are parking in those parking spots. So assuming that those, by marking them are going to give us more parking space, I don't know if that's going to be a really good assumption to make going forward, just as an AFA.
So if I understand that correctly, people are not parking in the striped stalls on the street, but are nestling as close as they can to get, because those six-foot wide islands are every couple of stalls.
Well, if you're talking about islands that you're removing, no, I'm not talking about those. What I'm talking about is there, there are multiple places on the side streets in which parking spots are not clearly painted, that people regularly park in and assume that they're actually parking spots. I've even been guilty myself of doing that because I think I can get away with it based on the way that painting is in, in the parking spot directly in front of it because it kind of tees, even though there's nothing after it to indicate there's a parking spot after it. I hate to admit my taking advantage of that, but I have. So I'm just, those spots, I wouldn't count those as being coming available if we're painting existing space where somebody could squeeze in. If we're, if we're talking about removing nubs, so to speak, that's different.
Yes. That, that was the study. Obviously, it was, it was a shorter study than what we'll be doing now as this engineering phase, but.
And Councilor Geary?
Thank you. Couple thoughts spurring up that, the Adams to Johnson's nine blocks, but almost to the opposite, I would say that I, I actually appreciate the, the push of vehicles, whether they're parking or, or traveling off of Third Street proper, which is the area of focus for the plan, actually a step in the right direction, more pedestrian-friendly, more overall aesthetically beautiful spaces, have less cars, whether they're stationary or moving or, or somewhere in between. So I think, I think we're heading more in the right direction by eliminating that. And I've also know, we've had studies done at various stages, when I served on the downtown association board, we had parking studies to say, this whole corridor and area had ample parking, you just, we just have to get people to the ample parking and, and break that psychological hope that I'm going to park right in front of the place I'm going to go in or I'm going home. And so there's, there's that battle to wage in the whole downtown area. And I know there's current and always going to be parking efforts done and always, every five years, much like when are we getting a Costco, it's when are we getting more parking downtown? So I think that's just an effort that's always being waged, but, but less cars on Third Street is my overall goal, whether, whether they're of any variety or doing any motion, so. Thank you.
Councilor Peralta?
Thanks. I just had a question. I thought I heard you reference, I thought I heard you reference early in the presentation, was it 30% of the trees that you currently think need to be removed and then you're going to update that later? Or did I hear that number correct?
It's actually 10%.
10% currently?
10% based on the 2019 tree health survey.
And that include, that, that included as well the root system? You know it did not.
No, the, the, this is where it gets a little tricky. The observations are, really have to be made above ground, right? It's really about the, you know, the trunks and the, and the branching and the, and the leaves. We cannot get to the, get to the roots. There's no, there's no good way to really sort of examine the roots without ripping up all the concrete.
Maybe I missed, maybe I didn't ask that correctly. You identified trees that were causing root.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the lifted roots. Yes, yes.
Is that number included in the?
Not yet. No, the 10% is just based on that observation of, of overall health. That lifted roots piece is, is what we're actually working on literally right now. The team is.
And there was never a reference to 30% that I was, that I misheard, no.
Not that I remember, no. Oh, no, I did say the word 30% design, which is a, which is a system engineering.
That must be what I misheard, thank you.
Thank you.
The conversation about parking was interesting. I tend to agree with Zach, Councilor Geary, and mostly just because we, at the highest occupancy times on Third Street have tended to be the weekends when we closed down all of Third Street for parking. So I'd feel like if that was an issue for the restaurants, they probably wouldn't support doing that. And in fact, they expand their capacity and are able to get more people down. That's my head on it. Thank you.
Councilor Payne has a question.
All right, Councilor Payne?
Sorry, Claudia has more control of my mic than I do. Thank you, Claudia. Just one question for Director Richards. Since it feels like the project is being delayed by several years, I'm just curious if budget-wise, we're considering, like if there's consideration for, I guess, inflation rate to make sure that we're budgeting for the completion of this project?
Yeah, so I can go into my portion of this evening's discussion, which, which is to sort of talk about the evolution of the project, the scope of the project and the budget update, if, if there's interest going there now.
I just have one more, circle back with the parking thing. I think the ship's already sailed on the design, but was it ever contemplated or looked at parking-wise if we would have gone to a one-way street and instead of people horizontally parking, they kind of come in and out of 45 so they don't have to parallel park?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We did, yeah. Through 2021 and 2022, we worked pretty closely with the technical advisory committee and the project advisory committee to look at various ways to, to either sort of route traffic or divide up the right-of-way, different sidewalk widths, et cetera. One of those was a, a one-way scenario and it was sort of ultimately rejected. We just felt, or I should say, the project advisory committee really felt that it wasn't going to, to meet the overall sort of needs of the, of balanced needs of businesses, community members, visitors, shoppers, et cetera. And we, we can certainly show you what that, what that looked like and what, how we kind of scored it, but it just, it, it really ended up not, not satisfying the, the community.
Understood. Would that actually net it any more parking or no?
Not really, no. As, as Heather was describing a few moments ago, we, we're finding more success by revisiting and tightening up and providing additional parking elsewhere through downtown. In other words, not looking just at Third Street as a closed system, but looking at all of downtown, that there are more opportunities elsewhere than, than trying to shoehorn more into Third.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mike Morris?
Just, excuse me, just one comment. I think it's important to memorialize the fact that as a member of the pack... fact that as a member of the PAC, we have spent countless hours discussing trees. That has been our number one priority. We are five months into this, and we have spent 90% of that five months when we have met discussing the trees. So as a advisory committee, the trees have been our number one priority, and I just wanted to memorialize that for the record.
Thank you, Committee Member Morris. Any other questions before Director Richards moves into the budgeting aspect?
All right.
Okay, great. So the city of McMinnville has been looking at a downtown improvement project as, as early as 2000, I'm sure earlier than that as well. But we know in, in 2000, we adopted a downtown improvement plan, and in that plan was direction to look at a streetscape project for downtown. Streetscape project for downtown really focuses on sort of what I call the frosting pieces. So it's the above-ground furnishings and the lights and things of that nature, not necessarily the infrastructure. And we, we put together a concept plan and, for downtown and some model blocks for that and in 2005. And then we started working towards our urban renewal district and urban renewal plan. And we took that, that project and put it into the urban renewal plan itself. And we identified the need for about $2.5 million for that project. That was based on that streetscape discussion, the furnishings piece of it for three blocks. The MIRAC, as you know, most of you were on MIRAC at the time, we started talking about, okay, when do we start implementing this project? So when, when do we need to start thinking about it, talking about it, and being able to fund it as it was the next project on our list to move forward? And looking at our revenue sources and the tax increment coming in, we, we did an analysis as to when we felt we could take out a bond and pay for the bond based on our increment, and layer that on top of the bond we currently have for Alpine Avenue. So with that analysis, we thought, okay, 2023 is probably the earliest that we can take out a bond for that $2.5 million. It gets, the $2.5 million escalates every year with inflation. And so based on, and we did that work in 2017. So based on that work, we said, let's start talking about this project. And that's when we hired Matt and his crew in 2018 and started going through what he described to you as the project vision and goals. The reason I'm sharing this with you is, over the history of this project and discussion in McMinnville, we've been very thoughtful, intentional, and mindful about this project, having discussions of what it looks like and making decisions at different milestones. So in 2018, when we brought together the project advisory committee for the first time, to really start diving into this project, we made it, the first decision we made was that it wasn't three blocks, that it needed to be Adams, Adams to Johnson and be nine blocks. We felt that was important because that, that was really the, the whole corridor of the downtown. And as Matt described, when you're making improvements, improvements last a long time. And we wanted to make sure that we were investing throughout that corridor because we wanted to have the whole corridor be vital. At the same time, if you think about the fact that in early 2000, we identified streetscape furnishings as the need, well, over that time, our sidewalks started to deteriorate to a point where mobility and accessibility became significant concerns. So when we were going through that early visioning process for this project, we also had a lot of discussion about, we need to repair the sidewalks. So not only had the project expanded from three blocks, but the actual scope of the project had expanded from streetscape furnishings to streetscape furnishings and sidewalks. The next step of it was, okay, we now understand we're going to repair the sidewalks. So let's really talk about, you know, what, how this corridor serves the community and how we want to serve it moving forward. So your discussion just now about the parking is very interesting because you just had a discussion about, you know, how do we divide this real estate relative to vehicles and relative to people, the pedestrians using the corridor, and then also businesses in terms of functionality and using the public right of way for business functionality. So the project advisory committee went through that exercise in terms of a concept design with Matt and his team, and the decision was made, we really want to dedicate more of the real estate to the pedestrian environment so that, so we are not only focusing on pedestrians downtown, the customers downtown, but we're also providing more real estate for the businesses in terms of frontage and being able to use the sidewalks for restaurant seating and things of that nature. Doing that then changes your curb line of, of your overall right of way. If you're going to change your curb line of your overall right of way, you're really in a, now in a process of designing a new street because you're, you're changing how the street slopes into the curb and the stormwater retention and everything of that nature. So the next step was to go into engineering. We knew what our concept design was, and we said, now we need to engineer this and really try to understand this better. And that's the step that we're in today. As we go through the engineering piece of it and look at a street reconstruction project, we're tearing up the street. If we're going to tear up the street, it really makes a lot of sense for us to also look at what's below the street. So we focused on above, the streetscape furnishings and the sidewalks. And then, as we got into a street improvement project, and not just a streetscape project, we started having a lot of discussion about infrastructure and evaluating the infrastructure. And that's what, that's what we've been doing behind the scenes while the project advisory committee's been working, working and talking about trees for the last five months, is we've been evaluating the infrastructure under the road that serves this business community. So the wastewater infrastructure, the water infrastructure, the stormwater conveyance system. And there's a lot of need there. It's old. We know that. That's intuitive, right? It's our, it's our older city center. So now we are looking at improving that infrastructure too. So I'm sharing this with you to, to let you know this project's evolving. It's evolving in terms of scope. It's evolving in terms of size, and it's evolving in terms of budget. We, originally, when we were just looking at the sidewalk repair and replacement and the streetscape furnishings, and we had expanded it to nine blocks, we estimated that our project budget was about $10 to $11 million. We also estimated that we would probably be able to undertake the project in 2025, 2026, based on if we were going to move forward with that type of design and move that forward fairly aggressively. And we thought that the urban renewal funds escalated to 2025, 2026 would be about $3 million. So we were, you know, seven, eight million dollars that wasn't not funded. And, and we started having discussion about, you know, how do we access those funds and start working on federal and state earmarks and things like that. Now, as we, as the project has grown and we're really talking about street reconstruction and infrastructure improvements, as well as sidewalk replacement and streetscape furnishings, we want to understand better what actually is this project budget at the end. So as Matt shared with you, we should have that first construction cost estimate in July. But we want to, we want to be transparent, establish expectations. We expect it to be larger than $10 to $11 million. And we expect our, our gap to be larger as well effectively for that. And so that may change the timeframe in terms of when we can implement the project as well, because we'll be looking for more funding than we originally thought we would be looking for. It is a 50-year project. It's a legacy project. We need to do it right. So we're comfortable with how it's evolved. We've come to you at different decision-making milestones. So these are all decisions that are being made by the community stakeholder group as they're working with consultant teams and with city leadership. And so we just felt that this time in the discussion, it was, it, we, that we wanted to bring this to you tonight so that we can prepare as we walk towards July in terms of that construction cost estimate. I often think of it as, you know, you're building a puzzle, and you're, you're discovering where the pieces of the puzzle are and putting them together. And we're still building that puzzle at this time as we, as we walk through this process. We should have a much better idea when we're at the 30% construction sheets and with that construction cost estimate as to what the actual project scope is, the project budget, and then start having discussions about how, how we're funding that. So with that, are there any questions? And no, I did not volunteer to deliver this. Just for the record, I was assigned it. But, and I hope, Councilor Payne, that answered your question as well.
So Director Richards, hypothetically, if we get to the point and we realize that this is be way, way above our means, is there the opportunity to backpedal and reevaluate and do something more along the lines of what we originally set out to do, which was more of an aesthetic treatment to the streetscape rather than an infrastructure project?
I think, yes. I mean, we always have the opportunity as we make decisions during this, these different milestones. I mean, we've been very thoughtful, methodical about how we walk through this process, both with the community stakeholder group and the city leadership. So those opportunities always exist, and that's why we come back to you with these updates and have these conversations. I would say a couple of things. One, I don't think we're just at a streetscape furnishings project at this point in time. We know the sidewalks need to be repaired. We did a survey, I think in 2021, and one of the surprising things that came out for me in that survey were the amount of people who made comments that they're no longer comfortable coming downtown, downtown. So, and that's a particular demographic in our community because they're nervous about mobility and their safety. And, you know, so we need to take care of the sidewalks. We had a lot of conversation about how the right of way serves the community and the businesses moving forward, so the next chapter of downtown. And after those conversations, the decision was made, we really need more real estate in the sidewalk space, right? And, and we want larger bulb outs. And we want the, we want the opportunity for businesses to be able to do sidewalk restaurant seating and have accessibility walking around that. And so, you know, those were conscientious decisions. As we make those conscientious decisions, it changes the scope of the project, but they're made for, for reasons that we feel will benefit the community.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, having sat through many of these meetings that we're talking about, that because the sidewalks are, I believe, a necessity, really not a, not a discretionary type call, that spending millions of dollars on a project to put in new sidewalks in addition to some aesthetic elements, and then tearing up a street five or 10 years later to do infrastructure repair that has to be done, sewer lines, water lines, storm drain lines, to me would be, I would have a hard time justifying that, that scenario as a responsible use of public funds in the first instance. So that's why I have supported a more comprehensive 50 to 75-year project as opposed to a five to 10-year project that you know is going to be ripped up when your infrastructure needs become critical. And downtown, in, in my view, downtown Third Street is the most important street in this city. And it deserves perhaps the highest priority of any street in the city relative to the investment in sound infrastructure that is not going to have to be, where you're not going to have to tear up sidewalks you've just built 10 years ago in order to fix or install federally mandated standards for sanitary sewer and storm drainage especially. So just those thoughts in addition to what Heather had to say.
Thank you, Committee Member Gal. And we'll go to Councilor Minke, and then Committee Member McDonald. Do you have a question after that?
I'll come back and wait.
All right.
This question may be a bit beyond what the brief budget discussion we've had, but this is an urban renewal district. We're, what, eight years into it now? Or we still have about 23 more years. And the possibility of such a large infrastructure improvement, I would think, would significantly increase the tax revenues for this particular area. Am I correct?
Tax revenues are increased by improvement values on private property.
On private property. So not.
Not directly.
Not directly, in other words. Okay. So that kind of answers my question.
Now presumably, I'm going to back up for a minute. One of the reasons this is in the urban renewal plan is because there was identified that making this type of investment on the main street corridor will encourage that private investment on the frontage, right? And so that encouragement of the private investment on the frontage is what increases property tax revenue.
So there is a substantial chance that the urban renewal tax incremental increase could assist us with this overall project in the long term? Yes, no, maybe?
It will. And it's, it's certainly, it certainly originally was thought to be in the $3 million range. It might, it might grow to the extent that the project is, is delayed by a year or two or three to $4 million or $5 million. It depends what other projects the urban renewal district undertakes in the intervening period, of course. But, but I think what Heather's message is, is that the scope of the project has grown beyond the urban renewal district's ability to be the sole funding agent, and that it is likely, this is my own, speaking from my own belief now, it is likely that sanitary sewer improvements will be partially paid by this sanitary sewer fund, water improvements by the Water Light Department, storm drainage by a new storm drainage fund that you're in the process of creating, and, and so forth, in addition to other grant monies and/or infrastructure loans that the city may want to take out from the state.
No, but my understanding is from Mr. Dietz that that's up to the, the place where the building resides, and after that, the, the building owner will have to put the bill. So would that be part of the urban renewal increase?
No. So if I understand it correctly, yes, the connections to the public infrastructure, if they need to be improved, will be the property owner's responsibility from the, from, to the, to the public right of way. So that underground infrastructure is not going to create a lot of assess, additional assess value.
No, I know what, what the utilities do.
Yeah.
We will not. But once it hits the actual owner of the building, then, well, that creates a property increase.
No, so that's what I'm saying. So you're assessed on your overall improvement value of, of the improvements on the property. I don't think you're going to see a lot of, and we can, we can bring an assessor into this dialogue in the future as we explore this further. I don't think you're going to see a lot of adjustment in the assessed value based on a water line improvement that's connecting the, the private side to the public side. With that said, we are having discussions about, so we are eight years into, or 10 years at this point in time into the urban renewal plan. You'll see tonight as part of a presentation about the annual financial report and, and the five-year work plan for MIRAC, that there's interest in doing, investing in a downtown master plan update, so that 2000 downtown improvement plan, going in and updating that, looking at what our needs are downtown, where we see opportunities for redevelopment and reinvestment, and then looking at the projects we need to support those opportunities for redevelopment and reinvestment. And that then could lead to an amendment to the urban renewal plan. And that amendment to the urban renewal plan could mean that we're investing, we decide instead of that 2.5 million that was assigned to this project that escalates with inflation, it's much more, because it makes sense that if we're investing more in this project, it's going to create that additional private investment on the frontage around it. So all of that's, can be part of the dialogue that we're going to have over the next two, two and a half years as we look at that process.
Thank you very much. I probably used too much time. I appreciate it.
To follow up on Councilor Minke's question, to trigger a new TAV by the county assessor, they need to make a 20% investment or more? Or what's the number of?
You're talking about a Measure 50 update?
Yeah.
I believe that 20% is in the original standards that were adopted for that.
Oh, yeah, of their current TAV. Kelly, did you have comments?
Oh, just one, a couple of comments. One, we haven't talked very much about the project timeline as far as how many years this is out. I think it, it's important to note that this is not a 2025 project. This is not a 2026 project. This is, this is out quite some time because that, so urban renewal is going to have an opportunity to develop additional funds with current improvement projects either planned or, or on the horizon. One thing I wanted to point out in this process, in addition to a tremendous amount of staff effort, and thank you for your work, everybody there, and the consultant efforts, people like Walt have been sitting on this process, project for decades. And this has been a very inclusive process. A lot of people, property owners in the downtown core, businesses, residents, have all been at the table through this process. And so there's been a tremendous amount of effort and heavy lift done by all those folks to, to work on this. And it has evolved into a beautification project, into a critical infrastructure project. I think when we sit back a few years from now, and as hopefully work begins, we'll realize the, and we'll probably see firsthand the necessity of infrastructure improvements needed down there. We don't even know what's really down there. I mean, we know there's a lot of things that need to be improved. We do know that sidewalks are lifting, and they create a very unsafe environment for our, our folks that live and work and visit here. So I, I'm looking forward and excited to move this project forward. I'm looking forward to the day we can sit back and say, it's a good thing that we did it this way, so we didn't have to tear up what we did. When we did Alpine, we did a tremendous amount of work underneath the streets before we paved them over. And I think we're going to see here shortly how those things paid off. off in a big way, because there's some exciting things in the future there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Committee Member McDonald, Councilor Chenoweth?
Yeah, Heather, can you follow up the comments by Committee Member Gow regarding the different partners' potential costs that they will be paying? You know, when we talk about the total cost of this, there's a portion of this that we're going to be worrying about funding, but there's a portion of this that's coming from other areas. Can you be, either confirm what he said, or be more clear as if that's not, if that wasn't accurate?
Yeah, so as we put together, well, first of all, I want to say, this is not, this type of evolution of a project of this nature is not unusual. Those of us who have worked on these types of projects, as you do more due diligence, there's more discovery, and it does evolve into these discussions. So these are good discussions, this is a good direction that we're going in. Yes, projects are funded from many different resources, and utilities have their, as we know here at the city of McMinnville, we have a wastewater utility. The wastewater utility is an enterprise fund, and it's meant to pay for, you know, it's the projects that it needs to support that utility. So there will be those discussions about what the wastewater improvements are that are part of this project, and how that utility participates in the proportionate share of those costs. The same is true of water, and as we'll be working towards stormwater. There's also other opportunities for funding sources, so I think what, in the end, as we put this project together, we're going to be looking at all the different funding opportunities and how to build this project and fund it and bring it to the community. We don't have the answers for any of those right now, we're very preliminary. This discussion is really just to sort of continue to be transparent and have the discussion with you as city leadership. We're at a milestone, we're working through the infrastructure pieces of this, we're going to bring a construction cost estimate to you in July, and we, you know, think and know it's probably going to be more than the 10 to 11 million we had originally identified.
That's part B of my question. Are we looking at a doubling, quadrupling, quintupling? Do we have any guess at it?
I'm going to defer that to experts more than I.
Yeah, we have not started the pricing exercise yet. We, you know, the first step for us is to finalize the scope, establish the scope, and then we'll put drawings together and prepare the estimate as part of the, you know, the first pass will be with the 15% deliverables, which are in mid-April.
And I wouldn't hold you to it, I'm just trying to get a feel for how much, I mean, I was trying to dissuade the doom and gloom feeling by pointing out that a lot of the funding could come from other vehicles here, but then I wanted a kind of understanding of what the real doom and gloom looked like, and you're passing, so I'll wait till the next time around.
All right, we're coming up to the end of our work session here, we've got a few minutes left. Is there any final comments or questions of staff or consultants?
I just wanted to make a comment on behalf of the advisory committee, which I have the misfortune to chair. We appreciate both MIRAC and the council's willingness to consider the recommendation of the advisory committee as to the adding of the tree preservation as an additional project goal, and also the use of the decision tree for the, for tree preservation as a part of the preliminary design process that the consultants are going through at this point. So I want to, on behalf of the advisory committee, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, and I just wanted to conclude that I don't think this is a doom and gloom discussion. This is, we're finally moving a project forward that this community has discussed for decades. We're going through it in a very thoughtful way, and it's evolving, and we're, you know, we're moving, we're ticking off milestones as we go. And so to me, we're moving towards success, and we're bringing an exciting project to bear, and we're having very thoughtful discussions with the community. We've brought in business resiliency early on in this discussion and engaging the business owners so that we can be as successful as possible when we're building this project, and when we're done, it will be the next chapter in legacy for downtown. That's good.
Thank you, Director Richards. Just to follow up on Walt's comments, is that something you need a nod from tonight on the tree matrix?
I would ask, are you looking for any council action tonight? Or just consensus to move forward?
Consensus on the work that you saw around the criteria, tree preservation criteria and the decision tree, if there's consensus among the council, we would appreciate that.
All right, we'll go around and in the aspect of time, just a quick yay or nay versus a long-winded answer.
I like the decision tree for trees.
And I think Walt stated where he's at, Doris? Gary's thumbs up? Morris, McDonald?
Enthusiastic, Lisa Ford.
Enthusiastic, really liking.
All right, looks like you got a unanimous consensus. Thank you for the work on that, I know it's very important to the community to preserve what we can. Thank you. And with that, I'll adjourn our 6:00 PM joint work session. All right, if everybody could take your seats, we'll get our council meeting underway. All right, the time is now 7:02 PM, and I'll call to order our regularly scheduled February 27th council meeting, and call on City Recorder Claudia Cincinero for a roll call.
Councilor Gary?
Good evening.
Councilor Minke?
Present.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Here.
Councilor Payne? She has not joined Zoom yet. Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Mayor Drapkin is absent this evening, and Council President Garvin.
Here.
All right, that takes us to Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll call on our new deputy recorder, David, to lead us.
Daniel. My best. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniel. That now takes us to proclamations, and we have one proclamation tonight for the month of March, which is Women's History Month. And that proclamation is, whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987, and whereas Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on the often overlooked contributions of women to the United States' history, and whereas McMinnville women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless ways, and whereas McMinnville women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the city by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working both inside and outside of the home, and whereas McMinnville women have played a unique role throughout the history of the city by comprising the majority of the volunteer labor force of the city, and whereas McMinnville women have particularly important, were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropy and culture institutions in our city, whereas McMinnville women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major social change movement, and whereas McMinnville women have courageously served our country in the national and state armed forces, whereas McMinnville women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other peaceful movements, which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas McMinnville women of every race, class, ethnicity, gender identity, and sexual orientation continue to make strides in reclaiming their rightful leadership roles in our collective histories, our present, and our future. Now therefore, I, Council President, City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim that March is designated as Women's History Month, and the City of McMinnville and do recommend its observance with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I also invite all to visit www.women'shistorymonth.gov and www.women'shistory.org to learn more about generations of women who have left enduring imprints on our history and witness whereof. I here and do set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 27th day of February 2024. Thank you, and that takes us to comments from community members. This is a time where any interested party has three minutes to speak. Comments will be limited to 30 minutes total, and there's forms over there to fill out, as well as if you're on Zoom and you would like to speak, use the raise your hand function, and Claudia will unmute you when we get to that point of the meeting. Claudia, do we have any cards filled out this evening?
Yes, we'll start with Linda and David Hatfield.
All right, and if you guys could just state your names into the mic, and then just the city you reside, and you don't have to state your address, and then the timer will start on the screen.
My name is Linda, and this is David Hatfield, and we live on Northeast Evans, 905 Northeast Evans Street. And for the past 11 years, we've lived there, and it was a pretty quiet street. And then there are four blocks in front of our home, which have no stop signs. We had a petition signed by over 100 people a couple of years ago and talked to the city council in regards to this matter, and we asked the city to please stop, put stop signs up at least every two blocks as it is elsewhere on Northeast Evans, and nothing has been done. Small cars and big trucks with very loud mufflers race up and down the street in front of our home all the time. It is next to impossible to sit on our porch and enjoy it. There's a church across from our home where a lot of families and senior citizens are in and out all the time. There are high school track students, elderly people in wheelchairs, and lots of families with small children and strollers and on bikes where this street, on the street constantly. We walk a lot up to Third Street to support our beautiful town businesses. There has been several times that small cars have popped their mufflers and hurt my ears to the extent I can hardly hear for a while. I have looked up, and there is a sound ordinance in McMinnville. I just wish the city would start enforcing it and the constant speeding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Claudia, got anymore?
Yes, we have Natalie Uther.
Natalie, thanks for joining us this evening. If you could state your first and last name and then the city you live in.
Yes, my name is Natalie Uterp, and I live here in McMinnville. I'm on the corner of Ninth and Evans, direct neighbor to our wonderful Hatfields here. And I have been living here for almost two years, it'll be two years in May, and I've seen, actually just in the two years, a huge uptick in the speeding going by, quite dangerous and egregious behavior by people in these vehicles, and I've requested more help from our police officers to enforce this area, and I've seen some pretty near misses. And I do know that we have laws here in Oregon for people to stop as pedestrians cross, and when they're crossing between on Ninth and Evans, I've seen some near misses, including myself and Mr. Hatfield as well. And I have that on my cameras, and I can pull that up, but we really need to do something about it. This, it's just getting really aggressive, you know, driving, and no one seems to get caught, so it's really, I really care for this town. I've worked very hard to find a beautiful place to live, and I'm so grateful. I worked very hard to find a beautiful place to live and I'm so grateful to be here. And um I think we need to work together to try to make this a better place. And um actually, believe it or not, Eighth Street, when it connects to um Lafayette, also has huge problems with the noise and speed. And um we have a lot of neighbors that have been complaining about it and we just want to know what we could do as um group effort to try to coordinate and try to get this um resolved. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next we have William Sykes.
William, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having me. Thank you, esteemed council and others. I'm William Sykes from McMinnville. My topic is loud vehicles racing around town. Quote McMinnville Municipal Code eight ten two sixty, vehicle noises. The use of any vehicle or engine, either stationary or moving, in a manner that causes or creates any loud or unnecessary grating, grinding, rattling, or other noise, including the discharge in open air of the exhaust of any steam engine, internal combustion engine, motorboat, or motor vehicle, except through a muffler or other device which will effectively prevent loud or explosive noises and the emission of annoying smoke. I approached the council on this topic in December twelve, twenty twenty three, and again in January twenty third of this year. And I trust my message was well received. Since then, Chief Scales reached out. Thank you, Mayor Drabkin and Chief Scales. I will let Chief Scales describe the response, but it's clear to me that there are many hurdles here, including lack of staffing, unclear ordinances and or laws, and no abilities to measure the sound even to write a ticket. I understand all of this. I get it. And this is getting out of control. I would say it's embarrassing. We can't sit back and accept this new rogue behavior in our beautiful town. It sounds like hooligans are taking over the town. I said hooligans, I love that word. Since we last spoke, there are even more folks ripping around with these modified exhaust systems. Some of them sounds like, like guns popping around town. You know what I'm talking about. I and others believe this is affecting the walkability in McMinnville. I promise if you walk down Third Street one evening, or Baker, or Adams, from Second all the way up to Twentieth, you'll hear it. These folks are racing around town? This is noise pollution plus dangerous exhibition of speed. As mentioned in the past, we are not alone and many cities around the world have had an increase in noise pollution from vehicles with modified exhaust systems racing around town. Some have installed audio cameras and are automatically writing tickets when sound violations occur. We need to start taking this issue seriously as it's already out of hand. I have some questions to leave with you. Can someone from the city help us understand if these folks are in fact in violation of Municipal Code eight ten two sixty? Second question, what is the preferred way to report this behavior on a go-forward basis to the city? Is it YCOM or do we call the police? I've been calling YCOM. And then are there logs from YCOM available to the public? Please, City Council, let's start a conversation about noise pollution in McMinnville. There are solutions that should be considered. Please join us at StopTheNoiseMac.com. StopTheNoiseM A C dot com. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other comment cards tonight?
Uh, that's everyone who's signed up.
And uh call again for anybody on Zoom if you'd like to comment to use the raise your hand feature and city recorder will unmute you. Anybody else in the audience that hasn't filled out a comment card? Would you like to come up and speak and fill out your comment card afterwards? All right, hearing none and seeing none, I'll close public comment. And that takes us to reports from councilors on committees and board assignments. Uh, start with Council Peralta.
Thank you, Council President Garvin. Uh, just brief report tonight, the council of governments uh annual meeting and dinner uh is tomorrow night, uh hosted by the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. So looking forward to seeing Kelly, I believe you and Jean are going and uh the city manager and Doris. So um appreciate that and uh that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Peralta. That was a great time last year and I'm sure it'll be a great time tomorrow night for everybody. I'm not able to make it, but. Uh, Council Minke.
Well, I am looking forward to it tomorrow night. Um, I, all I have to report is that there is an Affordable Housing Committee meeting coming up on Wednesday. And we are going to probably, we're going to be looking at a plan for this coming year. And probably one of the highlights that we're looking at is tiny homes and possibly making some rules around them for the use in McMinnville.
All right, thank you, Council Minke and Council Gary.
Uh, affordable housing tomorrow, otherwise I've, I have no meetings to report on since then.
Thank you, Council Chenoweth.
Thank you, uh, Council Garvin. Um, I almost said mayor. Um, M V L C met and covered two topics of conversation. Business Assistance Facility Grant, Resiliency Grant, and where we're at on the workforce development update on, in terms of what we're doing to try to build some workforce development in the community. Um, and we also undertook, or they undertook with Heather's leadership, a industrial land supply. They provided a map to show us what's available with the goal of trying to figure out what is easily unlockable for building to help meet the needs of our industrial and commercial um uh community. And then Parkway Met, we're looking at middle of next month, I believe, we finally go to bid on the next phase of the uh bypass, which will be the interchange at two seventeen and the existing bypass. And that's my report.
All right, and is Council Payne still with us online? All right. Uh, so for my committee reports, we have a visit McMinnville, our annual retreat tomorrow. Uh, so should have some good information to report out for you guys on that. Uh, Airport Commission meets on the fifth. Um, really nothing new, nothing new on Fire District or YCOM. So that'll take us to department head reports and we'll start with City Manager Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I have one item. Uh, I'd like to officially and formally introduce you in the public to our brand new Public Works Director, Jeff Hunsacker, across the way.
Welcome, Jeff. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Um, didn't know we were doing department head reports, so I don't have a whole lot to report other than you have a new Public Works Director who's on his third day now. Um, I'm excited to be here. I'm loving getting to know the community more and really um been having a great time getting to know the Public Works team here. They're a great team, they do great work. Um, they're really dedicated and you're all very lucky to have them. And I especially want to thank uh James Lofton, the city engineer, who stepped in as the interim Public Works Director from the time until I got here. And he's going on a much-needed vacation. So um we really wanted to say thank you to him. Excited to get to know you all.
Well, thank you for joining us. We're happy to have you. Where do you come to us from?
Um, prior to this, I was the city engineer for the city of Beaverton. Uh, I was in that role for about four years and I live in Beaverton. So um getting to know McMinnville, the community, but my wife and I came down a couple of days and got it, got lost on Third Street. And a great little street. I even visited the vinyl shop again today to buy another record. That's gonna be a problem for me.
Yeah, just don't trip on the sidewalk. Uh, thank you. And uh, City Attorney David Lightenberg?
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Planning Director Heather Richards?
Yeah, so if Remy was here, I'm sure she would share this, but uh today's been an exciting day for us at the city of McMinnville. Uh, Representative Elmer's bill, House Bill four one three four was um uh passed through the, the subcommittee of the Joint Ways and Means uh at the state. So what that means is at this point in time, it will probably, we expect it to leave the Joint Ways and Means Committee and move forward to the House floor and the Senate floor. There was a lot of flurry over the last twenty-four hours with bills. Hers is the only bill that remains as a standing bill outside of the Speaker's bills and outside of government uh state leadership bills there. Um, there, some of the projects in her bill got reassigned to some of the other leadership bills that were rolling through. But the City of McMinnville project remains in her bill and remains funded at two million dollars. So we're very thankful for Representative Elmer's efforts on our behalf and our region's behalf and her staff's efforts and um everyone else in McMinnville who have answered our rallying cries over the last couple of weeks for letters of support within twenty-four hours. As we roll through the different hearings process. That we expect the session to close. We heard um from the leadership that they are hoping to get it clo, the session closed by Thursday of next week. So um we're still have our fingers crossed as we walk through that process, but we feel much better about it after today.
Awesome news, thank you. And Claudia, anything to share?
And for the council, thank you.
All right, any department heads online? Uh, Finance Director Jennifer Collier, would you like to give us an update?
Um, I have nothing to report this evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you for joining us. All right, with that, um, refer you to your December twenty twenty-three cash and investment reports in your packet. And other than that, I would entertain a motion to uh approve the consent agenda or if any councilors would like anything removed, to do so now.
Can we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion for consent agenda uh by Councilor Minke and a second by Councilor Peralta. Council Gary, do you have a? All right, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes five to zero. All right, that takes us to resolution number two zero two four dash zero seven. A resolution approving code compliance liens on properties to recover unpaid civil penalty citations. Is Code Compliance Officer Nick Miles online? All right, Nick, it's all yours.
Hey, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So yeah, we have here um sort of our, our quarterly check-in with you all for some outstanding uh unpaid citations for liens. Um, no abatements this time around. We're usually a bit heavier on those the spring and the summertime. So um we've got a few on there for some miscellaneous types of violations, um some ongoing parking dog issues, uh some debris, junk, and garbage as well. So if anyone has any questions, um I'd be happy to um answer them the best I can.
And Nick, can you um, can you talk about the amendment to the resolution relative to one of the liens being paid off last night?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Heather. Uh, we did have a property owner contact our office yesterday afternoon to pay uh their, um, or to settle up their unpaid citations on their property. Um, that was uh property there on Arthur Street, I believe it was six forty-eight Southwest Arthur. So um they were able to take care of that and avoid the lien process, which is great for everybody.
So councilors, you have an amended resolution in front of you reflecting that change.
All right, with that, I uh, any discussion or questions for Code Compliance Officer Nick Miles? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number two zero two four dash zero seven.
As amended? As amended?
I'll move that as amended.
As amended.
Second. I don't know.
We have a motion by Council Peralta to move that as amended and a second by Council Minke uh as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution number two zero two four dash zero seven, as amended, passes five to zero. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, no, uh, resolution two zero two four dash ten has been pulled from the agenda and will be heard at our March twelfth council meeting, uh which takes us to ordinances. Our first up is to consider the second reading of ordinance number five one four one. And I'll call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to present.
Yes, so this is the second reading of uh ordinance number five one four one. This is our docket, serving doc, our land use dockets, G one dash two zero and G three dash two zero. Uh, to remind you what this is, this is the adoption of our housing needs analysis, our econ, and our economic opportunities analysis. And we also have in the packet our sort of summary of those two as our updated McMinnville urbanization report. You had your first reading of ordinance number five one four one on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Um, it adopts the, the documents as follows, the urbanization study, November twenty twenty-three, the housing needs analysis, November twenty twenty-three, the economic opportunities analysis, November twenty twenty-three, and a findings and decision document for docket G one twenty and docket G three twenty. It amends our comprehensive plan, volume one, and it repeals ordinances number four seven four six and four nine seven six. The needs analysis um describes a housing land need of two hundred and two acres, serving the city of McMinnville from twenty twenty-one to twenty forty-one to meet our population forecast that has been assigned to us for that time period. It also shows an employment land need of a hundred and eighty-eight acres, twenty-nine of those acres being industrial and a hundred and fifty-nine acres being commercial. And then thirty-two acres of public and institutional land need for four hundred and twenty-two acres. We were required to adopt a um housing capacity analysis, which is the new nomenclature for the housing needs analysis, and a buildable lands inventory by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, per O R S one nine seven point two nine six. As you know, we were bringing this through you as city council last fall. Um, we, at that time, usually when you submit a needs analysis to the state and you have identified land need beyond what you have in your current existing U G B to serve your population forecast and the growth associated with that, um, you need to show how you're going to meet that need. Uh, due to the escalated timeframe of doing this analysis after we just uh finalized our U G B amendment in twenty twenty-one, um, we were in discussion with the state about entering into their sequential U G B work plan so that we could do, um, so we could do the analysis as to what the need is, as to how we're going to respond to that need after we adopt this and submit it per the O R S. Um, to have that work plan approved, we needed to have it approved by uh the Yamhow County Board of Commission. And then we submitted it to the D L C D Director for review. Uh, they approved the work plan, um, you have it as part of your packet in early February. So we needed that work plan approved before we did a final second reading on this needs analysis. They, in the work plan, extended the deadline for submitting the need, it's needs analysis to February twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four. Our population forecast that we're working towards is twofold. Uh, uh, twenty forty-one is our twenty-year uh planning horizon for a population forecast of forty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-eight people. To put it in perspective, we're about thirty-four thousand five hundred people today. And then we also have a needs analysis for a potential future urban reserve if we want to go in that direction, uh, which is a forty-six-year planning horizon and that population forecast is sixty-two thousand eight hundred and three people. Uh, in terms of doing growth planning, to remind you, we do identify the need, the next steps for that. So we talked about four hundred and twenty-two acres of land need beyond our existing U G B today. The next step is we'll look at those lands within our existing U G B and see if we can identify land use efficiencies to meet some of that need. Um, so we'll be looking at things such as height, where we can do higher-density residential development uh in terms of the commercial land need and industrial land need. Are there opportunities where we can um look at higher-density jobs per acre for industrial land? We've already identified. We've already identified an area plan and an innovation campus where we want to do that over about 160 acres of industrial land. And then we'll look at whether there's opportunities to rezone property to commercial land to meet the commercial land need within the existing UGB. After we do that work, if there's still land need, we'll look at a UGB alternatives analysis and, and expanding the UGB based on that. So those two steps are next in our process. And per the work plan that you have in your staff report, that is task two, and we have through March of 2026 to submit that to the state. This meets two of your city council's goals and strategies, your goal for housing as well as your goal for growth and development character adopted in your MacTown 2032 strategic plan. So are there any questions relative to your second reading?
Any questions for Director Richards? Oh, Counselor Geary?
Yeah, I saw, I think there was some of the attachments you had in there was the letter to DLCD and their response letter back, no, maybe not our letter to them, but their response letter back about the adjustment in dates and process and confirmation. The bottom of that I noticed, I saw in there some timelines about the next updated UGB expansion process requirement to be complete within four years.
Yes.
Can you talk to me a little bit about that and the implications on this and the, just gonna open that one for you.
Yes, yes. So, you know, in the, in the, in the wise ways of the state, so there's two things involved with the sequential UGB process. One is you can't start the next step if the first step is appealed until that appeal is resolved. And two, you need to get it completed within four years. So we had a lot of discussion about this first task being the needs analysis, submitting it to the state, and classically and historically in McMinnville, every step of growth planning has been appealed. So if that's appealed, then we don't start the next step in terms of the land use efficiencies and the UGB alternatives analysis until that appeal is resolved. But we still need to get it done within that four years. And so we spent a lot of time working through the work plan and having that discussion and what it means. And the, the two tasks are outlined in such a way to be able to sort of support getting the work done and also allowing for that appeal process, but that's, that's the sandbox in which we're working with this. And I don't know if Bill wants to add anything else to that.
Not too much. You know, the, the, this planning process sometimes feels like a treadmill. You know, you're always going to the next step and then something else comes up and it's, you know, part of that is a nature of the process that, you know, you're planning for 10 years, it goes through a little bit, you're planning for 20 years, and it's, it's difficult, especially when most steps end up getting appealed. It feels like you're in a, caught in a cycle that never quite ends. But the, with the sequential land use process, you know, it just means that we're going to stretch it out a little more to get this one right before we go to the next step and the next step. And hopefully that will take care of the next 20 years and we'll get off the UGB expansions for a little bit, but we'll, we'll see how it plays out.
And to make, to make the hamster wheel more exciting, the, the state law that requires us to submit this housing capacity analysis by December 31 that they passed, I think this was passed in 2020, 21, somewhere, somewhere in the COVID area, also says that we need to submit a new housing needs analysis every eight years to the state. So we'll be starting that new housing needs analysis because it takes two years to develop the product, six years from now. So immediately, if we get successfully through this sequential UGB work, we'll be immediately starting again.
Did you say that next one, every four years?
Eight years.
Eight years. We have to submit it eight years. It takes two years to produce it, so we need to adopt it. And again, if that shows need, you have to either submit how you're going to meet that need or go back into a sequential UGB work plan. So we, you know, based on how efficiently we get through the process, we could be engaged in two processes at the same time based on how the, the state system's set up right now. They're aware of that. We've had discussions with them about those communities like McMinnville who have experienced sort of long hauls through the process that we could have, we could have subsequent processes occurring at the same time that we're working through. I don't know how we're going to do all that, but.
So one leg on independent treadmills. So a couple of questions. So we started this process in 2018, correct? But we need to finish the next one faster.
Yes.
The, you had said in that response, first step we decided was the first, was the needs analysis. Who's the we? Was that, who's making that call?
Oh, that's state law. So state law is you identify your need and then you identify how you're going to meet that need. So the needs analysis is the first step of, of this growth planning that we're required to do. And to back up for a minute, the reason why they adopted the new statute and rulemaking that got us into these eight-year cycles, so previously we used to be in what's called periodic review and typically communities were looking at these, I don't know, every 10 to 15 years as growth occurred and they were running out of land and looking at 20-year planning horizons. Periodic review was funded by the state, it's no longer funded by the state, so communities aren't doing that anymore. We're in a housing production crisis in the state of Oregon. We're in a deficit, and so there is need to figure out how to get out of the deficit and get into better production. And so that's one of the reasons the state was having a discussion about how do we, how do we expedite this sort of evaluation of housing need and housing production in cities and ensure that we're continuing to move that dialogue forward. So I think that's why they got on the eight-year cycle for the submission of these housing capacity analysis. And it, you know, we're in the first step of that cycle, so we'll see how it works with communities.
Okay. So confirming the four, four-year timeline is to complete the UGB in the sequential process. And, and when is that timeline starting? When did that start? When does that start? When did that start?
It starts when we submit to the state.
For this?
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, we've been in discussions with DLCD about entering into the sequential program for some time. February 7th was when we got the approval, yes, you can do it. So, you know, to some, by some extent, that's when it really started, but certainly once we submit this, you know, the, the clock's ticking on the next step.
Okay. Just, I'm not going to refrain from rephrasing the same, we will have an UGB expansion in four years question because I just still trying to gather myself that that's the fact. But, okay, sounds good.
And we may not. So, I mean, here's the thing, we, the next step is land use efficiencies. We don't know if we're going to need a UGB expansion or not. We just went through a UGB expansion. There's opportunities to look at efficiencies. We just went through a process of looking at an area of about 1,300 acres and had a discussion about how does that area serve the city of McMinnville in a better way in terms of land use efficiencies and needs. So, you know, I'm confident that we'll make significant inroads into meeting that need within our existing UGB. So we'll just, we have to work, we have to work the problem.
So that does get at one issue I've, I've had. We resolved the remand UGB expansion, correct? That satisfies a modern requirement for having a UGB passed, not satisfies a long past deadline? Is that, and so when we look at new requirements, the recency of that UGB remand counts for, counts, gives us credit towards that, not towards the long past deadline? Because you're referencing a recency in the UGB expansion, but I've always not, in my mind, it doesn't count.
It doesn't count. So if, if you remember, if that table that I showed you that had the list of cities that they put in, and that table's embedded in the state law, the list of cities and when they needed to submit the housing capacity analysis, we're in sort of that first round. And we're in that first round because our recent UGB amendment was based on work that started in 1996 and a housing needs analysis that was submitted in 2001 and amended in 2003. But we had, so that was, our last state acknowledged housing needs analysis was in early 2000s. So we were one of the, you know, most delayed in terms of doing an updated housing needs analysis and submitting that to the state and having it acknowledged. So they reached out to us when they were putting the bill together and they're like, you know, you're one of our oldest cities in terms of having a new needs analysis submitted to the state. We can put you in that, I think the first bracket had like three cities, or we can put you in the second bracket, which is 2023. And I was like, can we go as late as we can? Because we're currently, we're still working on the other work when that state law was passed. So, yes. We didn't, we didn't benefit from that.
Just one other thing to note is, as Commissioner, Commissioner, Director Richards indicated, this was new law in 2021. There's been a ton of new housing-related statutes. The current legislature is likely to pass another package. And so we're, we're with a lot of cities trying to figure out how this all works and make it all come together. We've got housing production strategies that we haven't had before. I wouldn't be surprised if there are amendments and refinements of the program in the next legislature after this as cities start making its way through. So, you know, this is, you know, we, we are required to get this done and we're going to get it done, but there's gonna be changes. Housing is an area of intense focus in the state at this point.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the new programs in the governor's housing bill that's rolling through the legislation right now, and I think it's still in there, everything changes daily, almost hourly, is the development of what they're calling a housing production accountability office. The housing production accountability office is all about holding cities accountable for doing housing production. So that, that is the, you know, the crux of it is we need to create housing production. So as they put, as they put this housing production accountability office together in terms of holding cities accountable for producing housing, we're also having discussions of where are the barriers for cities in terms of being able to do housing production? And the land use process has come up as part of that discussion. So, you know, we're constantly talking about as, you know, we, we have the existing state laws, existing land use system, we have the new statutes that have been developed to try and sort of, you know, stimulate some of the, to remove some of the barriers, and we'll continue to talk about that in terms of what's working and what's not working. There's a lot of dialogue between DLCD and cities. There's a, there is a weekly, LOC holds a weekly meeting with Oregon City Planning Directors to continue to talk about how do we move these things forward and respond to the state needs and the mandates and, you know, accomplish the work and work within also what's happening at our local jurisdictions, which is different across every jurisdiction in terms of support and opposition and moving things forward. So I think the dialogues is going to continue to move forward. I think we're going to continue to see amendments to, you know, what's happening at the state. The goal's always going to be the same right now, which is this, this state needs housing production so that we can control housing prices, create supply, and create affordable housing.
Very good. Thanks for the answers. I think we're far enough away from the relevant documents tonight that I'll speed my questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from counselors? All right, I had a couple of follow-ups on Counselor Geary's. The four-year time clock, does that pause or does that like clock get told like other land use if there was to be an appeal or what's our ramifications if we miss that timeline?
As I understand it, it doesn't pause. To the extent appeal extends, we could approach them about extending it further. You know, the idea was to build in enough time for an appeal and, and to move forward.
Okay. And then from memory back at our November 28th, there was around some of the land that we put in there, there wasn't really defined case law per se on, on that. Has any of that landscape changed or is it still what it was back in November?
It still is what it, what it was.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, with that, as council members might recall, the ordinance is, did not have unanimous support at the November 28th meeting, requiring these second readings to be conducted at a separate meeting unless any member requests otherwise. I'll call on City Attorney David Leitnerberg to read the ordinances by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5141. An ordinance adopting the November 2023 McMinnville Urbanization Report and updating the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, Volume One, by adopting the November 2023 McMinnville Housing Needs Analysis and the November 2023 McMinnville Economic Opportunities Analysis and repealing ordinances number 4746 and 4976.
All right, I'll now call on counsel for any discussion or deliberation before we vote. Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5141.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Chenoweth and a second by Counselor Menke. And I'll now call on City Recorder Claudia to poll the council.
Counselor Geary?
Nay.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta? And Council President Garvin?
All right, so ordinance number 5141 passes with a vote of four to one. And we'll now move on to 9B, consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5142. I'll ask if any council member needs to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or accuse themselves regarding this ordinance. Seeing and hearing none, I'll call on Senior Planner Tom Shower to present.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. I'm going to be introducing this, providing some of the background. And we have our consultant, Tui is online here with HHPR. She's going to talk a little bit about the framework plan and the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan itself, and then I'll conclude. Screen here.
Thank you, Tom. Should I go ahead and share the screen?
Yes, please.
Yes.
This is ordinance 5142, also referred to as Land Use Docket G122, which is the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan. The ordinance would amend the comprehensive plan by adopting the Fox Ridge Road Area Plan and its appendices as a supplemental document to the comprehensive plan and also adopt the decision document which contains the findings for the plan. Tonight's a public meeting, this is not a public hearing. The council will be considering the proposal and the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And just to provide a little background context, the area plan is the result of a series of steps that began with the, well, it started in the late 90s if we want to go back that far, but most recently in December of 2020, when the city and county adopted the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan that was approved by DLCD in 2021. That Growth Management Plan included the amendments to the urban growth boundary, included a series of updates to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, including a series of new policies and regulations for how we would plan for future urbanization of those areas and the urban growth boundary that are unincorporated, how they would transfer from their rural designations to future urban, urbanization with annexation. And part of the Growth Management Plan also included the adoption of a framework plan that allocated land uses to the different expansion areas and provided a conceptual high-level plan for what that land use plan would look like for the different expansion Part of the UGB planning process that was adopted included the updated policies in the urbanization chapter of the comprehensive plan that outlines essentially the three successive levels of planning for the UGB expansion areas. That starts with the adoption of the framework plan that was done as part of that urbanization plan in 2020. And then for each of those growth areas, the unincorporated areas. for each of those growth areas, the unincorporated areas, the, there's proposals in the comprehensive plan that specify we would adopt an area plan for each of those, undertaking one of those per year, providing the next level of detail for how those areas are to grow as individual incremental annexations may occur. And finally, for property owners in there, the individual property owners, when they're ready to request annexation and seek inclusion in the city, the framework plan and the area plan guide the master plans for those properties to ensure that they're bringing their piece of the puzzle in consistent with the overall plans for the growth areas. So, the following items were completed, starting in 2020, and some following actions since then. So, the areas that were, the unincorporated areas of the urban growth boundary that accommodated a range of different land uses received an urban holding designation until those area plans were developed. And those, so Foxridge Road has an urban holding designation. Title 16 of the municipal code was amended in 2021 that essentially aligns the annexation process with this area planning and master planning process we just talked about. And then with the Foxridge Road Area Plan itself, the city is now in the process of completing the first of the area plans for the different UGB expansion areas. So, I'm going to turn it over to Twee here to talk about the framework plan as it relates to the Foxridge Road area, the Foxridge Road area planning process and the substance of the plan. And I'll, she's concluded with that. She'll hand it back over for some conclusions.
Yes. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. And good evening, city council members. So, for the framework plan, this was established as part of the MGMUP. The framework plan itself provides a high-level concept plan for future land needs within McMinnville's urban growth boundary expansion areas. And this includes the Foxridge Road area and has greatly informed the Foxridge Road area planning process. So, the area plan served to further provide that high-level detail consistent with the framework plan itself. And as the council may recall, the Foxridge Road area contains approximately 230 acres located at the western end of the UGB along Hill Road. The 42-acre school district site within the study area is already within McMinnville city limits, and the remaining land is currently under the comprehensive plan designation of urban holding. And as shown in the MGMUP framework plan map below, the Foxridge Road Area Plan will contain primarily housing, with another significant land use being that development of the future high school at the school district-owned property. And based on that framework plan, a partial neighborhood activity center is identified to be located along Hill Road, near the Wallace Road Roundabout. And the partial neighborhood activity center is anticipated to be between five to 10 acres, with one to two acres of neighborhood commercial and office use, about two acres of high-density residential housing, two to five acres of medium-density residential housing, and the remaining being residential land uses for lower density. So, the framework plan also calls for the incorporation of one neighborhood park between three to five acres and located no more than a half mile away from all residences, with the identification of a natural resource community park, natural green spaces, greenways, and trails throughout the entirety of the study area. The city has initiated this area planning process in 2022 after entering a contract with our planning consultant team at HHPR. And from there, we were able to establish a work plan and this distinct public engagement program from the, for the Foxridge Road Area Plan. And the public engagement process was heavily informed by the project advisory committee with its members made up of key stakeholders, residents, and city liaisons appointed by the city council. A technical advisory committee also included city staff that was established at this time. And the broader public engagement process included an online community survey that was provided in both English and Spanish, several stakeholder interviews, two successful community design workshops, a total of six project advisory committee meetings, social media outreach, information provided at a community fair booth, along with a joint work session that we held with city council and the school board and city council and the Planning Commission. So, this public engagement process really allowed us to provide necessary information about the area planning process itself to the public and gather critical feedback to shape the community's vision for the final area plan. The final Foxridge Road Area Plan document includes an executive summary followed by five major chapters, and this includes an introductory chapter that reviews the project background, existing conditions that provides context, opportunities, and constraints within the area, a summary of the extensive community engagement process and plan development process, the actual Foxridge Road Area Plan itself that details the community's vision, goals, and policies, and finally, the recommendations for implementation measures to see the plan through. So, most substantially, Part Four, which is the area plan itself, provides the plan's narrative, vision, goals, and policies, and the final area plan map that has been developed through multiple iterations as informed by the community design workshops, project advisory committee, and the technical advisory committee. The Foxridge Road Area Plan and the plan map ultimately demonstrates that the plan meets and/or exceeds the minimum requirements for land needs as identified and consistent with the city's adopted planning documents, like the framework plan. And the narrative is a key element of the plan. This provides us with the critical information for future plan development and the application of the area plan. And then the visions, goals, and policies are organized to support that narrative and vision. So, this final preferred land use concept has been illustrated within the plan's area plan map. And I would like to skip over to the next slide to show the map as I review this information here. So, as you can see on the area plan map, this summarizes the land use elements of the plan and demonstrates consistency with the framework plan. You can see the partial neighborhood activity center on the east side of the area boundary with the planned land uses of commercial mixed-use, high-density and medium-density residential, a neighborhood activity park and plaza at the center of that neighborhood activity center, and the neighborhood activity center's focus and support areas are outlined in the dashed boundary as well. There's also unidentified neighborhood park that's south to the area, open space greenways throughout with trail elements. And within the neighborhood park, there is a buffer that's shown in a darker green color from Masonic Cemetery to respect that use. And a special use park has been identified around the Rock Quarry Pond, along with the Natural Resource Community Park on the west side of the area that corresponds with some of the natural features that have been identified and scenic views along the northern boundary or ridge line. And with that, I will go ahead and pass it back to Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Twee. The, one of the things that we shared at the Planning Commission hearing was just a reminder of, as we go through this process, for people who are participating or may reside or own property in the area, they may not engage with a process like that very frequently or much at all. And so, we get a lot of questions about how adopting a plan like this would affect property owners. So, we just, we wanted to be clear that the, as we talk through this, that adopting the Foxridge Road Area Plan doesn't rezone the properties in the Foxridge Road area. That's a separate action would be needed for that to occur on a property-by-property basis. So, essentially, the properties and property owners today, if they wanted to pull building permits or do something with their, their land, they're in the, for those in the unincorporated area, everyone but the school district property, today they go to the county, they pull building permits, they do their land use through the county, under the county zoning that applies to them. Upon adoption of this plan, it'd be the same process for them until they pursued annexation. So, they remain unincorporated, subject to county land use regulations. The plan guides what happens when property owners come in and ask to be annexed into the city for what they would need to do in terms of the annexation process and the land use requirements to demonstrate how they would propose to develop their property consistent with the area plan, which is intended to ensure that they are meeting their fair share in the, the community's vision for how it will meet its overall growth needs throughout the different UGB areas in the community over time. So, it's upon annexation that properties need to comply with the city land use regulations if they choose to develop and seek city services. So, clarified that. We had some folks attending the Planning Commission hearing that said this information was helpful. Anytime we sent out a notice, we, with a public hearing notice about a plan like this, we tend to get a number of calls from folks, which again occurred. So, took some individual calls from people that, again, aren't familiar with the process, sometimes they think the city's acquiring property and developing. So, we dealt with some individual questions about that, clarifying how this worked for people. And then, following the Planning Commission meeting and some of that feedback about how this would be helpful to provide this type of information in more depth to people who own property within the area, we did, I'll talk through that in a minute, but we did hold a, a meeting, invited residents of the Foxridge Road area, met with them at one of the residences up in the Foxridge Road area and talked through some of these things a few weeks ago. And Twee had the plan map up there. Next slide, please, Twee. I did want to, I wanted to make sure we covered that information, but as we looked at the map, hopefully it was apparent to, to councilors that, held a work session, I believe in October, I think it was October 18th, following that, the project advisory committee met, reviewed the recommendations that came out of that work, joint work session with the Planning Commission, city council, incorporated those into their recommended plan. So, hopefully, as you look at that, you'll see things that looked familiar and reflected some of the input you provided. Once the project advisory committee met on November 29th and made their recommendation on the plan, we initiated this formal public hearing, land use process with the requirements where we provide notice to the Department of Land Conservation Development. So, we initiated that shortly after that. And the Planning Commission held their legislative public hearing on January 4th and recommend approval to you. We incorporated some feedback we received, some editorial corrections, scrivener's error, one error on a aerial photo map, a couple items like that. No substantive changes following the project advisory committee's recommendation. And we did have some comments regarding tree growth protection. And I just wanted to clarify the relationship between the Foxridge Road area planning work and the separate Goal Five natural features work that's, will be coming through the, the planning process this year. We split that work into doing natural hazards first and then the Goal Five natural resource work. So, that work deals with inventory and protection programs for natural features, including tree growth. So, that's the work that would address that issue, not the Foxridge Road Area Plan specifically. Next slide, please, Twee. I just also wanted to note, at the Planning Commission hearing, the testimony we received, we had one written item of testimony, which is in, in the packet from Galen and Peggy Hegna. That letter was regarding their property, which is, they have a large property that's about half is in the UGB, half is out of the UGB. And they've been interested in finding out how to pursue bringing the rest of the property in the UGB. Regarding that, as it pertains to the Foxridge Road Area Plan, we noted that is outside of the scope of what, what this work could or would entail, and did have a follow-up meeting with them to talk about that further. The other testimony at the Planning Commission hearing, we had five people testify orally. All indicated they were testifying in support. We had Sid Friedman spoke in support, Mark Davis spoke in support, Peter Van Patten spoke in support, but also addressed some of the comments regarding what we talked about a moment ago with people having questions and whether we could do something to meet an informal basis to answer questions, to alleviate some of those concerns, which we did, and received feedback from that meeting that that was helpful and helped address a lot of the questions that people had. We also had testimony from Brian Morrissey. He simply had a question as to whether the city had been looking into any immediate plans to purchase the quarry property, which we said no, that was not something that was being done as part of this work. And then we had testimony from Sarah Tuchalski, the Chair of the Project Advisory Committee. When it came time to ask if there was any opposition, we had nobody in the room or online that had any opposing testimony. The meetings, again, that followed after the, the Planning Commission public hearing, I mentioned the Foxridge Road meeting already that occurred on February 12th. We also met on February 8th with the DEIA committee to share information about the plan and some of the background information, particularly some of the key aspects of the guiding policies that led not only to the, the area plan, but to the, some of those foundational components of the growth management plan, including the Great Neighborhood Principles, designing places that provide alternate transportation, mobility options for people, looking at income diverse neighborhoods, opportunities for aging in place, all of those components of the Great Neighborhood Principles that were adopted in 2019 as, into the comprehensive plan as policies. We also talked about the Neighborhood Activity Center concept, which is a core component of the Foxridge Road Area Plan and the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. And then we talked about the framework plan and its kind of application of those principles to the UGB areas. Next, Twee. So, with that, again, consistent with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, staff is recommending that the council adopts ordinance 5142, adopting the Foxridge Road Area Plan and its appendices as supplemental document to the comprehensive plan, and adopting the decision document with the findings. Again, this is a, recommendations from the Planning Commission on legislative matters come to the council for consideration based on the record. You have the option to adopt an ordinance based on the record without a hearing. You can adopt that ordinance in an amended form with revisions. You can call for appellate hearing, which we come back and schedule at a future date, or refuse to adopt the ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
All right. With that, I'll call on councilors for any questions for Tom. Council Chenoweth?
I've got a couple. Thank you. My memory is when this came before us, before there was two, it was a solid two acres of commercial. Now, what's coming before us is one to two acres. And when it was brought before us, before I expressed concern that that was not going to be enough acreage for commercial, given that we're, the commercial deficits we're facing all throughout our community. So, I'm wanting maybe a little understanding as how we went downward after that discussion.
Sure. Twee, can you go back to the plan map slide? So, the, I think maybe to clarify, the framework plan had targets for what was to be achieved within the plan area. And so, that talked about the one to two acres is what the framework plan target range was. If you look at the map, what's designated in purple is the mixed-use commercial area. And if you look over on the left side where it says "commercial," it says framework plan target was one to two acres. Following that joint work session, essentially that southerly purple area that's designated as mixed-use commercial was previously designated as residential. And so, this plan reflects a change to increase, essentially almost double what was originally designated. It was just the north half. And so, this actually exceeds the target of one to two acres by providing about four, almost five acres now.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the second question I have, and it may have been in there, and I apologize that I missed that in that, on that slide. So, and this, I might have missed this as well, but one of the other concern I had was making sure we did everything in our power to ensure water supply to the quarry pond was protected and maintained. Is that in this, or is that more granular to be done later?
That's reflected in Chapter Four, reflecting the, there's not a specific action I That's reflected in chapter four, reflecting the, there's not a specific action item to do that, but that is identified as a, a goal is to, to maintain that as a, as a resource with that aspect.
Any other questions, Counselor Chinowitz? Counselor Gary?
I, I have some questions mostly about the process and then the dominoes for the next UGB expansion area processes. So I can wait to come back to those till after the more germane Foxridge questions, if anybody has them.
Okay, we'll put a pin in those. Counselor Peralta, any questions around the Foxridge area plan?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I think there are repeats of some of the ones that I asked in the last meeting, but now that I'm sitting down. Can you explain to me what the difference in terms of lot size is between LDR, low density resident, residential versus MBR and HBR?
Yes, so the low density includes, essentially those plan designations correspond to the different zoning districts we have today that could potentially change in the future with, we have different efficiency measures, but the low density includes 9,000, our R1 zone, 9,000 square foot lots, our R2 zone of 7,000 square foot minimum, medium density gets into our R3 and R4 zones with 6,000 and 5,000 minimum lots, square foot minimum lot size.
Is there a, is there a maximum lot size with low density residential?
No.
So, so the presence on this doesn't necessarily mean it'll be subdivided into 9,000 square foot lots, it just gives the right, transfers the right to the property owner to do that?
Correct. So if someone were to pursue annexation and we were looking at them going through that master planning process and the change in the comprehensive plan map and zoning, it would be to one of those zoning designations. That time.
And also to add to that, where, where you mostly see the low density residential is also where we've identified potential high hazard soils. And so we're going through the, the natural hazards planning process right now. And one of the discussions for those areas where there is high hazard soils is limiting the amount of development that occurs there. So some of those parcels actually won't be allowed to subdivide much smaller than what they have currently.
Okay, that's, that's for me really important because, as you know, with each of these issues where we're annexing new properties into the city, part of my sort of policy preference is that we are, are protecting older trees and older groves that are currently not protected. And so for me, it's kind of an act of faith to sign on to this when the proposal to protect the natural resources hasn't been developed yet. And I'm a little bit troubled because the language that we're using around protecting those resources is kind of reverting to the terms grove as opposed to trees. And I think particularly when you're talking about oak savanna, which tends to be a little bit of a lower density, I just want to make sure that those have protections, just because we only have three or four of these left in the city, and this is one of them.
Yeah, so adopting this area plan is not a regulatory framework, but it's, it's pointing to goals that we want to achieve as, as a city in this area. And then the regulatory framework is the natural features planning that we had to put on hold due to staff capacity, but we're hoping to bring that through here sometime in the next year. And that looks at protection of groves, it also looks at protection of significant trees and identifies what they are. Two points to that is that when we, when we're protecting land from development that's privately held, that is natural resources, we need to do an analysis to show that the protection of those natural resources are more valuable to the community than the development of the land itself. And so we haven't done that analysis yet, that's what's going to be next. And then as part of that analysis, we will also have to develop a program where, where we allow that property owner to transfer what the development rights would be for that land that we're protecting to another property. So doing some sort of transfer of density as well. So those two, that's the regulatory side of this, and those two pieces should be coming forward sometime in this next year. We don't, and yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand what I, what you just said. So let's say I have a five acre parcel up there, and then we create this area plan, and now I have the right, because of this area plan, to subdivide my property into a bunch of 9,000 acre parcels dependent on soils and safety and whatnot, but essentially that's my right. What you're saying, if I just heard you right, is that as a result of doing this planning work, if we in any way restrict the ability of that person to develop the property in this plan as a result of resources that we've identified, then they have a corresponding right to do additional?
If, if we have not done, and Bill might need to help me through this, because I actually haven't done this type of analysis before. If, we, we have to do what's called an E S E E analysis for natural resource protection. If we have not done that analysis yet, we don't have the ability to prevent the development of the, prevent the development of that land by, for protection of that natural resource. That's part of the goal, the Oregon land use goal program in terms of looking at natural resources. Now what I will say is this, this land is in our urban growth boundary. It can't annex into the city without an annexation agreement with the city saying we want it to annex in. So if you recall, we went through that process sometime in the last year with the property that's underneath the Three Mile Lane Bridge. We'll go through an annexation agreement process. It also has to be contiguous to the city limits to annex in. So where you see the more intense development in this area plan is areas where we don't anticipate having hazardous soils or natural resources that we want to protect and that are also contiguous to the city. So I expect we'll see, you know, annexation on the property that's closer to Hill Road and adjacent to the school district sooner than we will see annexation of property as you migrate up the Foxridge Road hill, where, where that type of work for natural hazards and natural resources still needs to occur.
Okay. Can I follow up? Okay. So, does it matter in terms of the right, the bundle of rights that a property owner would have, which order we do the natural, which order we do, whether it's the natural resource industry first and then the area plans or vice versa like, meaning does creating a, an area plan establish a set of rights that then get restricted by later adopting a natural resource inventory, or does that have no bearing?
Yeah, it's a complicated answer, so let me try and do the best I can. In terms of the area plan, you know, as Tom indicated, it's an iterative process of focusing in on a specific area. You start with a framework plan, an area plan, concept plan, annexation, and then eventual development. And the question is, you know, right now we're, you know, we're not at the 30,000 foot level, we're more than 20,000 foot level. We're focusing this, this particular area plan doesn't change the regulatory framework in which these properties operate. They're still under county jurisdiction, nothing the city has done affects their rights to develop. Once they get annexed, that's kind of when the, the switch flips. That's when city ordinances go into effect. And so if we have in place a certain natural resources protection by the time the annexation occurs, they come in subject to that.
Got it.
If they were to come in and then we adopt the natural resources, then there's, then we start having some of those issues. There was, I'm trying to remember what the, you know, measure, measure 49, there was 37 replacement, gives some rights to people about, you know, if, if there's a reduction in property value. And we could argue about whether the, those additional restrictions are reductions in property value, which is part of what led to the discussion that Heather touched on that hasn't gotten very far in the natural hazards program. There has been some discussion of including a transferable development right, so that if in fact there is restrictions that have significant impacts on properties, they can take what would otherwise be developed, you know, the rights and transfer them elsewhere. Those programs are notoriously difficult to get right, and so, you know, that's, that's part of the work. But to the extent there are transfer of development rights that comes with restrictions, then you wouldn't have a measure for a 49 claim because in fact your value isn't reduced, it's just different.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. The, no, I'll ask it separately. Thank you, that's good enough.
Counselor Minkie, any questions?
No.
Any other questions before we get into Zach's UGB questions? All right, I'll ask a follow-up. You said the annexation kind of triggers the natural resources that Sal was bringing up. Is that triggered by the date the annexation's adopted, or by the date they drop their annexation application?
I believe it's when they come into the city. I think you're referring to the, to the goalpost rule.
Yeah.
And so the criteria that govern the annexation win the drop.
Okay.
But in terms of development, unless they come in with an annexation development proposal and, and given the annexation agreement, that need to do.
Yeah, so we do require a land use process as part of the annexation agreement before annexation. So, and the, so the master plan needs to be, the concept master plan needs to go, needs to be going through land use before, before the resolution for annexation or ordinance, I always forget we do it by ordinance here, ordinance for annexation. So they will be, that master plan will be reviewed under existing ord, existing regulations of a city when the application is submitted.
Okay, so the answer to your question is no but, you know, the, the master plan is what's in place on the date of the annexation drop.
Okay. Zach, floor is yours.
Just a, just a couple of questions. How long did the process to, how long did this Foxridge area plan process take?
Started in 2022. I don't remember the exact start date when the RFP was issued. Say June, mid 2022 probably.
Eighteen months-ish?
Yeah.
Okay. And what would the, this was the first of five that we had set up to, to sort of game out the next, that UGB stuff. And the goal was one a year for five years, right? So now getting this first one underway, where are we at on looking at the other four of these?
I think that's a larger discussion of staff capacity and resources to move these forward. I'm in conversation with the city manager about, about our work plan, our long range work plan. As you know, we have a clogged pipeline of long range planning that we need to achieve. And we have, you know, we have staff capacity that we have, right? It's not infinite, it's finite. So we are in discussion about that long range work plan and, and, and putting it, matching it up with our staff capacity, and I think we'll be bringing that discussion back to city council sometime over the next couple of months as we walk through that. I don't know, Jeff.
City manager, Tyra?
The other thing that I'll just forecast for you is that while it's the smallest of the areas, in some ways Foxridge Road is the most complicated. There's a water reservoir there, Quarry Park is there, there are a number of lots that are already developed and hold residential uses, there a significant elevation relief on the, on the property. Some of the other areas in the UGB, in fact, I don't, I don't think any of the significant areas on the southwest side of town are developed at all, they're all farmland. They don't have infrastructure, and so there's going to be a lot of infrastructure planning that goes into them, but in some ways it'll be a little simpler and straightforward, dealing with larger parcels of property under single ownership, for instance. So it's not necessarily a guarantee that, that we would, we would do, that it would take the same length of time. There's also, one of the things that we're talking about is the possibility of bundling a couple of theirs areas together and doing a larger chunk. So maybe we don't do four more area plans, maybe we do two or three more area plans and, and do slightly larger parcels. But that's, that's part of what we're talking about and we'll bring forward to you in a future day.
I will say that the next area plan we have scheduled is the southwest area plan. It's the whole southwest area, and we, we right now have identified that that will take 24 months for us to get through that process. The reason why that's longer than this one is because the infrastructure master planning is more complicated to serve that, and we're going to need to understand that to be able to identify where the different elements of, of development can occur there. So our wastewater conveyance plan, a master plan has been underway and it's coming to a conclusion here fairly shortly. The water master plan, we just heard from McMinnville Water and Light, has been underway and is coming to a conclusion here fairly shortly. Where we have constraints is we haven't started the transportation system planning, and so we have concerns about having that, that underway as well, so we can really identify that. A southwest area plan is about 300 plus acres, and so those infrastructure plans to support the sort of area planning will be critical as we move through that process.
Yeah, sounds like what I'm hearing is much to consider on the, on when and how we move forward with these area master plans. And I know they're, they're incredibly important, and I, I think it's important to get this work done and move forward on it, but I think maybe that what can be saved for the, the work plan conversation is, yeah, that being intentional about, we're at a point now with that choke point that all those projects are important and they all need to get going. And, and it, we should be really good at a fewer number of those than, than the capacity, the production ability we currently have on all of those, which I would say is, is less than what I think we can be doing. So I would add, I would just add that, that Sal's natural resources plan urgency up to that TSP water and, and wastewater planning, and I'd love the opportunity to get those done prior to launching the next effort and, and, but it sounds like that'll be the, the work plan discussion, so.
It will be, and I will say with those two other plans, the hazard plan and natural resources plan, those, the data for those were first assembled in 2018. So at some point in time, and this will be a conversation I'm going to need to have with legal counsel, at some point in time the data becomes irrelevant and we start over again, right? And some of that's baked into the statute, so I need to understand that a little bit better as we're, as we're talking about which plans to move forward in a more expeditious manner. I'm concerned as the community development director about developable land for housing in this community. These area plan processes are not quick, we're delayed by a couple of years on this already. The Foxridge Road area, although, you know, the first area plan we've done and there's a piece of property that I've already heard from that's ready to move forward and start having discussions about annexation, it's 30 some odd acres, and other than that, we haven't heard any interest of annexation on properties there. We have heard a lot of interest in annexation on properties in the southwest area, and we, we need to tee up some of this land to get into entitlement so we can continue to respond to our housing need here. We are, we have very, very limited developable land within the city limits right now.
All right, any other questions for Tom, Heather, or our consultant on Zoom? Sal?
I just wanted to acknowledge, because we haven't, which we usually do, just how much we appreciate the work that you're doing on a, on a limited staffing capacity relative to the workload that you have. So I see it, I think everybody on the dais sees it, appreciate it.
Great points, thank you. All right, so with no further questions, that takes us to our fork in the road this evening of those four options that Tom laid out on that last slide. Adopt ordinance 5142, adopt the ordinance in amended form with revisions, call for a public hearing, or refuse to adopt the ordinance. And so I'd open it up for discussion now on councilor's desires.
I, I think the, the case for public engagement being satisfied has been made, and I, I don't feel the need to have a public hearing anymore on this issue.
Counselor Chinowitz?
I would move for 5142 since we had no testimony in opposition and only testimony in support. It's, and I haven't heard anybody on this dais make recommendations for any sort of revisions, so I would just say going with option one.
Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with moving it forward, I just, I'm a little concerned, as I mentioned, about just not having the natural resources inventory work in place as we adopt these plans. I'm concerned that we'll, even if it's just a small amount of negative impact, we'll bring properties into the city that will result in the loss of those resources. So I'm going to support this going forward, but I just reiterate that same concern, and I understand that the planning department's aware of it.
Understood. Counselor Minkie? Understood. Councillor Menke?
I greatly appreciate all the planning department has done to bring this forward. Uh, I, I personally feel that it's great as written, so I, let's go forward with it.
All right, um, after that discussion, I would entertain a motion to pass ordinance 5142 to its first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so have a motion by councillor Menke and a second by councillor Geary. We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5142. Does any councillor have objection to having this ordinance read by title only? During none, I'll call on city attorney David Leitenberg to please read the ordinance by title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5142. An ordinance adopting the Fox Ridge Road area plan and its appendices as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Uh, any further council discussion before we vote? All right, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5142 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a vote the first time? Yeah?
I think we got to vote on the first one, too.
It's not in my script. Only read it? You have to vote on the first one, don't we?
This is the first one. Moving it to the second reading is the motion on the first reading.
Oh, yeah.
Is, is the motion on the first reading.
Oh.
If it is unanimous, then we go to the second reading. If it's not unanimous, the second, if it's unanimous, the second reading could be done. Right.
All right, so we have a, a motion by councillor Menke, a second by councillor Geary, right?
Whatever makes you happy. Yes?
Let's do it. I think we need to vote.
Call for a vote? All those in favor of first reading of ordinance 5142, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Do you have to read it again?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it here in the script. All right, I'll call on city attorney David Leitenberg, uh, to read the second reading of ordinance number 5142 by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5142. An ordinance adopting the Fox Ridge Road area plan and its appendices as a supplemental document to the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance 5142.
So moved.
A move by councillor Chenoweth, second by councillor Menke. Uh, I'll ask on city recorder Claudia to poll the council.
Councillor Geary?
Aye.
Councillor Menke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor Peralta? Uh, council president Carvin?
Aye. And with that, I will adjourn our council meeting at 8:34 PM. And that takes us to our urban renewal agents.
I appreciate, I appreciate, uh, hearing lawyers talk. I look at lawyers often.
Thanks, Twee.
No, no, it's good.
All right, we got one more meeting, Sal. Um, I'll call to order our McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 8:35 PM. This is to consider resolution number 2024-02, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the annual financial report for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, per Order of Vice Statute 457.460. I'll call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, to present.
Yes, so this is our annual, uh, report that we, uh, prepare, uh, per the O R S that talks about the activity of the, um, Urban Renewal Agency in the Urban Renewal District over the past fiscal year. Um, it's not to be confused with the, um, the annual financial report that's done through our audit process. So the things that we need to report on, and this went to the MIRAC at their last meeting, and they voted and recommended bringing this forward to you for this meeting. So we, uh, we talked about, and this is for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Um, we report on the resources that, that we, money received. So if you'll see here, we received about $799,000, um, from the current property taxes. So that's the discussion we had earlier about the tax increment, that was 652,000. And then we do have a couple of loans out there that, where payments are being made on those, and that's the property assistance income that you see there. We also report on expenditures that we had, so our expenditures were 412,000. So we are carrying some money forward into the next fiscal years as we build toward these larger projects, and you see those identified there as well. Uh, the debt service is the debt service for the Alpine Avenue bond that we have. This shows our long-term bond obligations for that bond. We have one at the moment. We will eventually, as this, um, urban renewal area matures and we start doing more larger projects, we will probably have a series of bonds that you'll see us reporting on here in this section. Um, and then we report on what's the proposed budget for the fiscal year that we're in today. Um, it, it, that's July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Um, we have two funds in our budget. We have the Urban Renewal Fund and the Debt Service Fund, and what's happening in those, and you see that there as well. And that's the adopted budget that you went through in your process, um, in May, June last year. We report also on the budgeted amounts in that adopted budget, uh, in terms of expenditures. So our largest expenditures for this fiscal year we're in today, um, is the Third Street Improvements. We had 185,000 that we dedicated to that, and then the downtown master plan, which we'll be working on MIRAC with here over the next couple of months.
Can you comment on the parking allocation money?
Yes, the public off-street parking, um, for 64,000, which actually ended up being closer to 80-some-odd thousand, is for the pavement that we did at the First Presbyterian Church parking lot, um, that we have a lease on that for public parking when it's not in use for the church. We also report on maximum indebtedness. So the maximum indebtedness is the total indebtedness that this urban renewal area, uh, plan, um, can establish, and it's $30 million. Uh, we currently have spent 3.1 million of that, so we have 26.8 million remaining in that. What that tells me is the, the plan's rel, even though the plan is 10 years old, um, it takes several years to generate your tax increment. So in terms of implementing and investing in projects, we're still fairly young in terms of the plan itself. And as the, as the years mature, we'll probably see that maximum indebtedness, um, go down more exponentially year over year. Uh, the, probably the most important part for our partners in terms of the overlapping taxing districts is the calculation of forgone revenue on, uh, for the taxing district. So this is, um, this is revenue that's collected after the urban renewal area was established and goes into the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, the largest, um, forgone revenue is for the city of McMinnville, and the second largest is for the McMinnville School District. Based on how schools are funded in the state of Oregon, this isn't a direct impact into the McMinnville School District. It's a direct impact into the overall state, uh, school fund, and then that's distributed, um, proportionately. So there's other urban renewal areas and districts that are having a larger impact on the state school fund than this urban renewal area and district. Feel pretty confident saying that.
Will you, I know, this is last year's annual, but going forward, will you see the fire district on that list?
Yes, uh-huh, yep.
And I'm sure if we don't show it, we'll, that will be duly noted. We, we now, we now have additional people attending our MIRAC meetings that we've noticed, though. So anyways, um, what we do with, uh, the annual financial report is we notice it in the paper, that it's available. We send it to our overlapping taxing districts so that they have it as well, and we keep it at the city for anybody who's interested in it. Um, at this time, we always talk to you about the discussion that MIRAC's having for next year, so I wanted to share that with you fairly quickly. Um, we have a baker's dozen list of projects that are identified in our Urban Renewal Area Plan. Uh, so there's 13 of them. These projects are the projects that we can invest in, and the plan also says how much we can invest in them. And then also the timeframe in which we should make the investment. So the implementation of the Urban Renewal Plan is fairly detailed when it's adopted and gives us guidance on how we move that forward. Um, the numbers here, you see the urban renewal amount is totals 18 million, and then that's escalated over the life of the plan in terms of when we expect to implement these. So we have a detailed financial analysis that shows, um, these projects in terms of, uh, CPI inflation index and when they're going to be implemented, and that's what gets us to the 30 million. Interestingly, when this plan was adopted, several of the projects were also out in our, um, transportation bond measure. And so many of the projects were funded through that process. Um, and so those have been grayed out in this sheet that you see here, and those that are in dark, um, black bold are the ones that are, the plans moving forward with. I suspect when we do the downtown master plan and look at an update to this plan, we'll be sort of rearranging some of those funding resources into other needs as well. Uh, we do a project dashboard every year as to where we're, where we're at in terms of expenditures on projects. So the property assistance program identified $940,000 to, that we could invest in property assistance over the life of the plan. And again, that's $2,013, so we watch that escalator through the end of fis, fiscal year end 2024. Let's see, our total thus far is $468,000 that we've invested in property assistance programs and loans and grants. Um, and then we expect in our, of the fiscal year we're in right now to invest additional $350,000. That's based on the acquisition of the Northwest Rubber, um, site. And so with that, with that investment, we will be at a total of $818,000. So we'll be looking at that and doing some calculations, um, for that, that particular project in terms of the index and inf, index and inflationary figures to figure out where is our maximum threshold and how much we have left. But it's something for us to be watching because we're, we use this, um, this tool very effectively in terms of public-private development partnerships and getting that, that redevelopment happening in the district, which is creating the tax increment. So if you think of the Atticus Hotel is a great example of a project that we invested in and created that tax assessed value that councillor Menke was, um, asking about earlier. Uh, we also have our parking. We only have a million dollars in our parking project, which we talk a lot about. And our total thus far spent on there is actually higher than 78, because the First Presbyterian Church came in over what we thought. So that's about 98,000 at this point. The Third Street Improvement Project, we have spent 320,000 on that thus far. And, uh, as indicated earlier today, we had about 2.3, um, identified for that in 2013. The Alpine Avenue Project is a $5.3 million project. It's meant to span the whole length of Alpine Avenue. We've done about a third of it, so that first, that first piece of the project was not the whole project. We expect to do the rest of the project later in the plan. In fact, it's one of the latest, um, projects to do, as per the timing of the projects. And then the, um, urban renewal funds collect interest, so we call those interest proceeds. They are governed in a different way in terms of how they can be expended. They can be expended on projects within the urban renewal area that have not been identified in the urban renewal plan but achieve the goals and objectives of the plan. And, uh, so we are calculating that as we go, and there's about $61,000 in that pool of funds. I like to show the sort of tax increment finance dashboard, um, so to understand how we're performing. So that development, um, forecast that we had when we first adopted the plan and where we're at today. Um, this is a, you know, it looks more, this, there's a lot on this table, but it's because we've been visiting these numbers over the years here in McMinnville in different ways and reevaluating. So when we first put the plan together, we had a low-growth scenario and a medium-growth scenario, um, that we put together saying, where we identified, we think these sites are going to redevelop at this rate, and this is the growth scenario associated with that. When we adopted the plan, we adopted something in the middle of those two scenarios, so low and medium. So these are the numbers that we forecasted in our financial feasibility analysis. We then, after we did the Alpine Avenue Bond, we saw that we were actually collecting less than what we had identified in our urban renewal report when we adopted the plan. So we did what we call this reset. We wanted to understand better where we were at and what we would forecast based on where we were at, because we were now calculating, you know, future years after getting that bonded debt. And then these are the actual numbers, uh, that are trending on the slide. So we're trending a little bit higher than the reset that we did in 2017, but we're trending significantly lower than the adopted Urban Renewal Financial Feasibility Report. So those are two things for us to be watching as we move this forward and look at, um, financing the projects that are in the plan. Our, we are anticipating that the fiscal year end for 2025 will be 711,000 of tax increment. Uh, MIRAC works from a five-year strategic plan, so they take those 13 projects and identify the ones that they want to be moving forward based on the timing that's identified in the plan as well. And so this is, um, that five-year strategic plan, and, uh, we revisit that at this time every year and talk about what we want to do for 2025 as we prepare budgets. Their discussion was to keep it consistent as what it has been previously, but also to add this piece down here, which is the Northwest Rubber Site. Um, so moving that forward in the property assistance program and, and having a focus on, uh, getting that into redevelopment. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, now it's council discussion. Uh, councillor Menke, do you have a question?
No, I don't. I just was asking.
Uh, councillor Peralta has a question?
I have, uh, a couple of questions. Um, can you, do you have a map of the, uh, urban renewal area on the presentation?
No.
Okay.
However, it is on page nine, uh, six.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. I just thought for other people's reference, so.
Let me try to bring that up.
That's okay. My, my question was, the urban renewal area, uh, as I'm looking at it, basically covers from First Street to Seventh Street in parts. But the point is, it covers this, this main area of the Third Street area, the main area of Alpine. It stops when you get to, uh, 99W, and it doesn't cross over to the library and the community center properties. So my question is, and this may be a little outside the box, but, um, number one, what's involved or what would be involved in changing the urban renewal area to expand the boundaries, to include that into the scope of the area? Is that something that's lawful is, would be one question? And another question would be, would it be worthwhile to consider, if that's a possibility, adding in the library and the, um, community center redevelopment into the scope of project for the urban renewal area? Is that something that's just too outside of the bounds of what it does, or does, is that something that might make sense?
So, two parts to that question. The first part is, yes, we, there is a process in which we can amend the boundaries of the plan. Um, it's a major amendment to the plan, just like any change to the, to a project and how much funding goes into a project is a major amendment as well. And so we've had discussions about, as we go through this downtown master plan update process, that we'll be looking at boundaries as part of that work. And then the second, because that will help inform the major amendment. The second piece of that is, um, with urban renewal dollars, uh, the statute is pretty clear at this point as to investment in public facilities, um, in terms of things like libraries and community centers and stuff like that. Well, parking, yes, so public parking, I think we can look at. What we need to do is always ensure that the projects we're investing in are advancing the goals and objectives identified in the plan and removing the blight that's been identified. So if it meets those criteria that that investment in the project removes the blight and advances the goals and objectives, then we can create finding saying it makes sense to invest in that. The, how urban renewal is in. How urban renewal is invested in communities has been under a microscope, I guess is a good way to put it, over the last many years because there is impact to overlapping taxing districts. So they want to ensure that we're being good stewards of the money, investing where it needs to go.
So if I can just follow up, sorry.
Yeah.
So what got me thinking about that is that if, as we go forward with the parks master plan, and eventually that's, I mean, eventually they'll go forward as a bond issue potentially. If that isn't successful, we might need to piece together other kinds of revenue to do improvements to the community center and the library as sort of a plan B. And if that happens, then improving the parking in that area seems like it's pretty important. And so that was what got me thinking that that might be an option for improving the parking infrastructure, since we spent very little of that money and that's a potential
Yeah, I suspect parking's going to be a big dialogue and probably a major amendment for funding in that project. The other thing I think that will be a dialogue as we move forward with the downtown master plan effort is the community center property itself, as it sits today. If it's no longer functioning as the community center moving forward in the life of this plan, there will probably be discussions about what is its future use and how can this urban renewal district help implement that moving forward? And so we would, you know, through that downtown master planning effort, those types of dialogues should bubble up. It should also identify where the need is to make boundary amendments and then also bring in new projects. We're limited on terms of how much we can expand a boundary of an urban renewal area, and it's based on a percentage of the overall area. This isn't a big area, and so the boundary amendment's not going to be big either because of that. We did calculations on that because we had a request to actually expand it to pick up the spear end of Alpine Avenue at one point in time, so I can look that information up. We were surprised at the number of acres that we could expand it by.
Thank you.
But I do think that will all be part of that downtown planning process.
Thanks, Heather.
Heather, to follow up on Counsel Peralta, could you provide a little bit of context on like how, you know, for the most part, it looks like it's Alpine, Lafayette Avenue, and the EID, but then you have that northwest, yeah, that got added? And like, what was the methodology for that being included, or?
I wasn't here at the time, so I can only give you my best guess, reading the documents and the files. But I believe that there was identified opportunity sites up in this area for redevelopment and need as well, and so that's why it was brought in, that's why the boundary was drawn as it was.
Okay. Thank you.
And actually, if you think about it, that is actually where you've seen some early improvements that have occurred there. So we have the, I forget what it's called, Harold Washington's development that occurred, that's new construction that occurred after the area was established, that's in the increment right now.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Counsel Chenoweth?
I don't actually have a question, just a comment. I don't know if this is a copy and paste, but if it was, in the first five pages of numbers, there were at least three decimal places where there should have been commas.
Oh, okay, thank you all. Look at that. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution 2024-02.
Second?
Have a motion by Counsel Peralta and a second by Counsel Geary. I'll ask for, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. With that, I'll adjourn our urban renewal agency meeting at 8:55 PM.